Thank you. I would like to call to order the meeting of May 7, 2024. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Sean, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Adrian, are you doing the roll call?
I'll be doing roll call, Mayor Protem. Mayor Holt's Claw, Mayor Protem Vinyal.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari, Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Allison, Councilmember Duque.
Here.
And Councilmember Paddock.
Present.
Okay, tonight, tonight we have, Mayor Holt's Claw had told us that he would be on vacation this week. He's down at his son's graduation. Councilmember Cavallari has had an emergency and could not get back. His flight was canceled and Councilmember Duque has called and said that she is... Sorry, I'm looking at you. Councilmember Allison has called and said that she is sick and can't make it tonight. Could I have a motion to excuse them?
Motion to excuse.
Second. I have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Next up, we have public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience who'd like to give a comment? Barb, if you'd like to come up, name and city in three minutes, please.
Barb Heidel, Mill Creek, Washington. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wish to thank Scott and Jody for the great job of organizing the state-of-the-city event. The different approach to giving the speech was refreshing. The mayor just speaking, not being prompted. Also, a thank you to Josh and Tracy for setting it all up for us. Tracy did a great job with the sound system. It, it was wonderful to easily hear Mayor Holt's Claw speak. To Jody and Scott, well done. It's good to shake things up and try something new for the city. Thank you to all involved with putting together the state-of-the-city event. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak? Is there anyone online that would like to speak? Okay, I don't see anyone else. There will be another chance at the end of the meeting to speak if anyone would like to speak then. Okay, next up, we have presentations. And so first up, we have a proclamation for the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a period for the duration of the month of May for recognizing the contributions and influence of Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of our United States. Whereas in 1979, the president proclaimed a week between the first 10 days of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Week until 1990, when Congress expanded the observance from week to a month. In 1992, May was annually designated as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas today more than 21 million Asian American Pacific Islanders live in the United States and through their actions make America a more vibrant, prosperous, and secure nation. Whereas Asian American Pacific Islanders have distinguished themselves as leading researchers in science, medicine, and technology, and set the pace for work ethic in our nation. And whereas Mill Creek's population is roughly 20% Asian American and Pacific Islander and includes devoted community members who serve as artists, business owners, educators, healthcare professionals, first responders, and other professional groups and personnel. And whereas we, the City of Mill Creek, believe the injustices to any race, religion, color, creed is detrimental to the cause of freedom and inclusion in our community. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Vinyal, the Mayor Protem of the City of Mill Creek, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and ask our community to join us in celebration this Tuesday, May 7, 2024. Thank you. Now I think we are going to give a present, do a, give a presentation and hand out the proclamation. Oh, and give a photo. Okay, next up, we have a proclamation for Music for Life. Whereas Music for Life is a Puget Sound area nonprofit started in 2007 that acquires lovingly used musical instruments and provides them for use by the public school students of families in need. And whereas the benefits of participation in instrumental music at any age can last a lifetime. Music education is an integral part of a well-rounded education that prepares students for success in life by teaching teamwork and self-discipline. And whereas musical education helps facilitate learning in other subjects such as math, science, history, literature, international languages, and other academic disciplines, and enhances children's life skills. And whereas the cost of owning or renting an instrument is a barrier, preventing students from many low-income families from participating in instrumental music activities. And whereas many adults have lovingly used musical instruments in their garages, closets, or attics that they no longer use, the month of May is an excellent time to donate these instruments so Music for Life can start any repairs necessary in order to get the instruments to students in the fall. And whereas each musical instrument is a loner and must be returned to Everett Public Schools when the student leaves the school district so another student of a family in need can benefit from its use. And whereas Music for Life has provided hundreds of musical instruments to children in Everett Public Schools, including over 16 to those attending Jackson High School and 38 to Heatherwood Middle School in Mill Creek. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Vinyal, the Mayor Protem of the City of Mill Creek, on behalf of the City Council, do recognize the great work of Music for Life and designate the month of May as Music for Life Month. Thank you. And now we will do another, another picture. All right, thank you. And next up, we have a presentation from Snohomish County Affordable Housing and Behavioral Health Fund Interlocal Agreement Discussion. And we have Mary Jane Brilovic or Brilovic? How do I say that? Mary?
Brilovic, thank you.
Brilovic, okay. And she's the Director of Snohomish County Human Services Department, and she is going to run us through this presentation tonight.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. I really appreciate this opportunity to come and speak with you. I think the council had some questions about the proposed interlocal agreement between the county and the City of Mill Creek as other, as well as other jurisdictions in Snohomish County about the, the process used to determine which proposals will be funded for affordable housing and behavioral health facilities with the funds made available through House Bill 1406 and 1590. As you all know, there are a number of interlocal agreements governing capital funds and the distribution of capital funds between the county and the City of Mill Creek, as well as other jurisdictions in the county. And that includes community development block grant funds, federal, federal home funds, and state affordable housing trust funds. So these are funds that are made available through legislative action and councilmatic action at the county level to provide affordable housing and behavioral health facilities in Snohomish County, as well as support some of the services that go with them. So very quickly, I'll, I'll run through what are some of the system challenges these funds are intended to address. What is our proposal for increasing resources to address those challenges with these funds? And what is the, the process to determine how funds are obligated as outlined in the interlocal agreement? First of all, I think it's, it is true in every jurisdiction in Snohomish County that there is a lack of affordable housing, a lack of behavioral health facilities and services, and an increase in homelessness, that these funds, these situations have all been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic, and they are interconnected and require a coordinated response. Some of the key indicators, I'm sure you're all very familiar with them. One out of every three Snohomish County residents is a renter, and nearly half of those are cost burdened, meaning that they are spending more than 30% of their income on the cost of housing, be that rental mortgage plus utilities. Two out of every three residents is a homeowner, and nearly one in three of those are housing cost burdened. There are long wait lists for our behavioral health services throughout the county, a current shortfall in behavioral health professionals, which is really anticipated at this point to be dire in the future, in future years. And social isolation, substance abuse, self-harm suicides, and domestic violence have all been on the rise and exacerbated by COVID-19 pandemic with long-term individual, family, and community impacts. We are seeing that throughout the county. These challenges all intersect and increasingly visible in literal homelessness in communities throughout our county. We are about to release the 2024 PIT count numbers, point-in-time count numbers, but the 2023 point-in-time count identified a total of 1,285 individuals experiencing homelessness. And that includes individuals in this county who are unsheltered, sheltered in emergency shelters and in transitional housing. Now that point-in-time count is taken, takes place on one night in January of each year. And, and then there's also a follow-up of people seeking services for the following week. So it is by no means an indication of everybody experiencing homelessness, but year over year, there are some definite trends that emerge that can be seen in that. Of those individuals who were experiencing homelessness in 2023, 908 were adults in adult-only households, 105 were in households with adult and children, and 15 were in children-only households, meaning households usually of unaccompanied minors. 19 individuals were in transitional housing, 575 were in emergency shelter, 390 out of doors. All of these are, it's information that will be available to you. I don't want to just walk you through PowerPoint, but I would also like to, you know, provide that sort of context, if you will. There's more information that can be found on the infographic. There's a link to that and a link to the official site. And again, we will soon have an infographic for 2024 to show the numbers that were this, in this past January. So there's a recognition, and there's a recognition by the state legislators that there's, and at the local level, that there is a need for additional resources to address these challenges. The, the Housing Affordability Regional Task Force, which has had represented from, from this Mill Creek, as well as other jurisdictions, and North Town Behavioral Health, both finding support for that consensus that these are all challenges. Nationally, this is a hot, the programs that address homelessness and housing affordability have been a very top priority. And although Housing Affordability Regional Task Force included without significant new federal, state, regional, and/or local funds, we are, can expect limited progress in building more low-income housing to address these challenges. So when the legislator authorized these, House Bill 1406 and 1590, these have been the most effective tool we have been given at the local level to address the twin challenges of affordable housing and behavioral health facilities through the capital fund that was established. How can those funds be spent? They can be spent on constructing, acquiring, and acquiring affordable housing for low-income households with additional needs, constructing and requiring emergency bridge and supportive housing, providing services to individuals in emergency bridge and supportive housing, constructing and acquiring behavioral health facilities, operating and maintaining all of these facilities, and evaluating the investments made. So many fund sources in the past will only allow you to either construct or to do operating maintenance or to provide services. These funds actually allow all three legs of the stool to be addressed. So the, an analysis has been done of the amount of funds we anticipate collecting since the, over the first five years since the 1590 funds began being collected on April 1, 2022. The 1406 funds began being collected by Snohomish County and other jurisdictions much earlier, but the lion's share of the money is in the 1590 resources. And we've developed a five-year projected expenditure of 114 million plus. And that's broken down into several categories. I will say that that was developed through, that plan was developed through extensive community input and, and revised and, and modified, and, and will be a living plan year over year. Each year, the Snohomish County Council will be authorizing the proposed expenditures. So the, right now, at this point, the expenditures for the first five years are anticipated to be for affordable housing, 65.5 million. Bridge and permanent supportive housing, 27 million. Housing connected services, 8.5 million. Behavioral health facilities, 10 million, matched with additional resources from the, an additional local sales tax, the 1/10th of 1% chemical dependency and mental health sales taxes being collected, and 3.5, nearly 3.6 million for administration and evaluation. The long-term anticipated outcomes are, over that time period, 550 additional affordable housing units and 150 units of bridge and permanent supportive housing created with these funds, as well as substantial increase in behavioral health facilities. With behavioral health facilities, it's a little bit more challenging to identify because we, people could be proposing to do detox facilities. They could be proposing to do inpatient treatment, outpatient treatment, triage, counseling services. So there's a wide range of services, all of which have highly variable costs. But if all the money were being spent on 16-bed inpatient treatment facilities, it would amount to 48 more beds. So that is a substantial increase in, to address the need here in this county. And again, some money for services and, and evaluation because the council is very interested in knowing what is being accomplished and to what extent is that working. So the protected impact would be that the number of housing units we could produce, if we did not have the tax, would be anticipated to be 222, would go up to 722. 720 should be probably 72. Additionally, 150 members of the county's unsheltered population can be brought off the street, more behavioral health facilities, provide services to support impacts, and create really a long-term impact from these investments. So, and this is really through partnerships with cities and tribes throughout the county. These investments can be enhanced still further and multiplied. So what is the process by which projects will be selected? So as is the case with all of the counties, the public funds that need to be competitively procured, the county will issue notices of funding opportunities that are widely distributed to entity, for entities to apply for these funds. In fact, a notice of funding opportunities for 3 million in behavioral health facilities was just released and is currently open. Another one that will combine 13 million from this fund with some resources from the Federal Home Investment Partnership funding will be released shortly. And a request for proposals that will combine funding from this fund, as well as what is, some surge funding through the American Rescue Plan, will be released to select a operator or operators to support operating, maintaining, cost services for the two new start centers, which will be in a motel, motels that were purchased in Everett and Edmonds. So that will be released shortly to provide, find operators for those facilities once they are fully completed. So, once an OPO is released, the proposals submitted are reviewed by Snohomish County to determine eligibility of organizations of the project proposed. Are they proposing to do something that is allowable with the resources available? Although it is a local tax, it is the, the, the state has determined what are the areas in which those funds may be spent. Behavioral health facility proposals will also be reviewed by the county's Chemical Dependency and Mental Health Advisory Board to advise on the need for the project proposed. Are they, are they addressing the highest, the highest and best use at a given point in time of those funds? All eligible proposals will be reviewed by the Technical Advisory Committee. And that is a body comprised of all the jurisdictions that have signed on to the interlocal agreement governing the use of these funds, as well as some citizen representatives. That body will submit its recommendations to the county's Policy Advisory Board, which will make final recommendations to the council and ultimately, which will ultimately approve proposals for funding contingent upon successful contract negotiation. So the ILA spells out the role of the jurisdictions in that, in that process to move from being a staff technical review, a review of at least the behavioral health by the council's advisory board, then the Technical Advisory Committee, which is, has representatives from all the jurisdictions that sign on. So that's their, the point at which those entities have, the jurisdictions have, can discuss and talk about the proposals and determine which ones they wish to recommend for funding. And then the council making the final decision. I provided, I, I was asked to provide just information on what are the, the, what's the law, the RCWs and Snohomish County Code governing these funds and these processes. And so I've provided a slide of legislative history, but I won't walk through all of that. That information is available to you in, in this presentation. So, but if there's certainly questions you have about that, I can answer those. So the question would be why I've signed on to the interlocal agreement? That is, that basically gives each, the jurisdictions that sign on a seat at the table for discussion, review all the proposals, know what's going on, whether it's in their jurisdiction or other jurisdictions, and be able to recommend which proposals get funded for the Snohomish, for Snohomish County Council's consideration. So, very high level. I didn't want to take a lot of your time, but I certainly appreciate your attention and am cer, am willing to answer any questions you may have to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Mary Jane. I'm looking to see, Councilmember Seckler has a question?
Hey, Mary Jane, just a quick question. As I heard you correctly, we have to make a decision whether or not to opt in, correct, on this?
Yes, that's correct. And the way you would opt in by was signing into the interlocal agreement.
And what is the due date on that?
There isn't a due date, per se. So jurisdictions were not, some jurisdictions have already signed in. Different jurisdictions have different processes. Some have to have council approval of different and different ways of getting that done. So, but at the point that the first wave of proposals come in, whichever jurisdiction sign on are the ones that will be at the table for that, for reviewing those proposals.
And approval of this, did you say guarantees you a seat at the table?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Paddock?
Thank you for the presentation. A couple of questions. So you outlined the benefits, obviously, having a seat at the table and sounding like having a voice at the table as well. Are there any responsibilities or commitments the city is making as, as part of having that seat at the table? That's the first question.
No, other than as participating on the body so that when the meetings take place, being able to be there and participate in the meeting. There is nothing in signing this ILA that, for example, requires a city to... When it comes to any of these, these are capital projects, which means that if they are inside a jurisdiction, that all the jurisdiction's rules around zoning, land use, permitting process, et cetera, still apply. So none of those are in any way mitigated or, or affected by these, by this process. But if a proposal comes in for a given city and that looks viable, and, you know, we're certainly not interested in requesting that, or putting forward recommendations that a project be proposed, be, be funded in a jurisdiction that is not, in fact, not going to allow that project to be built there.
Thank you. And the second question, and I can probably go look this up, which is probably what you'll tell me to do. Who are the other municipalities that have signed on?
Gosh, we, you know, we, there are a number that have, we can send that to you. No, it has not yet been posted, but we can get that information to, to you. But it's been sent to all the municipalities in Snohomish County. And, you know, most have indicated, not all, but most have indicated an interest in signing on, and some have actually done so. Depending on their processes, they're all different.
Okay, that'd be a great list to see when you, when you get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jane. I actually have a question, and honestly, I'm not sure if you're, you're the one to answer it for me or if someone else will need to answer it for me. Because I'm, I'm curious, it's been a while back when my Todd was on City Council, so probably like around 2019, that we, we agreed to participate in a program from the state. So I can't remember if it was 1590 or not, where we did get to keep a percentage, they allowed you to keep a percentage of the sales tax, but then we had to agree on something, come back later to agree on something to use that money for. Is that what this is, or is this a different?
Okay, no, no, this is actually a different pot. The resources you're speaking to are 1406. So what's confusing is because each jurisdiction could apply through that two-step process, as you say. First, to pass a resolution and councilmatic action, I believe. It's been a while, you know, pre-COVID. To have their own rebate, rebate basically out of the state's tax of 1406 funds. Cities have the authority to spend those on either capital projects or rental assistance. So a large number of cities, I think it was 13 in Snohomish County, elected to receive those funds. Snohomish County itself also gets to receive some of those rebated funds for those cities that did not pass the, the action to receive those funds. And of course, the balance of county. Those, those funds are, you know, and we have been collecting those funds because they, for the county, those are to build affordable housing for households out of below 60% of area median income. We've rolled them in with the 1590 funds, so that it just is added in the state. It's almost like program incomes of 1590. So you still have your own separate funds that are completely under your control, and we have similar funds, but they are, and they've rolled into our process.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for clearing that up.
I know, it's very confusing, all these different pots of money.
And it's been a while too, right?
If we want to get really confusing, we can talk about document recording fees coming and going, so.
Did anyone else have any questions? I don't think so. So thank you so much for coming and sharing the information with us tonight.
Well, thank you so much. I really, we really enjoy the relationship with the City of Mill Creek. Thank you. You've done fabulous things in the city and look forward to working with you in whatever capacity. I appreciate you giving me the time to come talk about this this evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, next up, we have the quarterly financial report for period ending March 31, 2024, and Q1 2024 investment report. And Finance Director Lombard is going to give that to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem, and good evening, City Council, members of staff, and to our audience, I'm joining us virtually, and those in council chambers. This report has been reviewed by the Finance Committee, and it's slightly different than the presentation that you have in your packets because I've included some of the improvements that the Finance Committee provided last night. Cause I've included some of the improvements that um the finance committee provided last night. Um and the new version will be uploaded, um I believe tomorrow. So I am pleased to provide the financial report for the quarter ending March twenty twenty four, as well as the investment report. Um so just to start off, um our econo- uh the economic environment. So the uh consumer price index U S averaged through March of twenty twenty four uh was at three point five percent. The Seattle metro area remains above uh that that average, it's at four point three percent. I mean, you could see since um. Since June of twenty twenty three, that rate has stayed under four percent. Right here. And I'll show you what that uh but the impact of this in our uh the impact of this rate is will be in our financials. Okay, also, the federal funds rate remained at five and a quarter and five point five percent. Um in fact, uh at the uh April and May twenty twenty four meeting of the Federal Open Market. Um Committee, they maintained that rate, the federal funds rate at at the same level. All right, um for the general fund, uh we've increased our general fund resources by three point five million. Um and that and this represents the impact of the ordinance twenty twenty four nine thirteen. Um which is the um ARPA resolution that you adopted last April nine, and I'll um dive into it in a little bit. All right, so for the fifteen month period, our benchmark is at sixty two point five percent. Our revenues came in total of fourteen point six million, we are sixty two point two percent um collected. Um and you'll find that um our regular property taxes are lagging, and that's um that's expected. The uh biggest uh collections that we would have for property taxes will be around um May and after the collection in November. Um our sales tax, sales and use tax and uh licenses and permits. As well as our uh miscellaneous revenues and our transfers in are all trending above at or above the sixty two point five percent benchmark. Um the ones that are uh lagging behind are the charges for services at fifty eight point three percent and the fines and penalties at forty seven. Um point three percent, so recall that um uh. Our, excuse me, let me go to the sales tax first. Okay, so our sales tax through quarter um through quarter one. We are slightly down compared to twen- to the same period in twenty twenty three, we are down by one percent. Um however, this um one million represents twenty seven percent of our collective of of our adjusted budget. And um you'll notice too that uh the orange um categories are uh. The ones that have the uh biggest um decline in um. Year over year comparison, and that's the construction and the retail trade. And I think um the construction represents the, you know, the uh slow in the housing construction that the state has experienced, and they have continued to report. That indeed for quarter four of twenty twenty four, construction is slowing down. Whereas the um yellow categories, the retail, real estate rental. Leasing uh accommodation and food services and miscellaneous are the biggest um gains during this period. With about with, of course, the um accommodation and food. Services trending the highest, the highest gain there is about twelve percent. All right, um so looking at this uh differently. Um by location, you saw this um graph in the prior report. Um so this shows a four-year period of the total collections. Uh for the city, but it breaks it down by location, and the three locations are those generated within the city, the ones generated. Um outside the city of Mill Creek, but within the state of Washington, and of course, those that are um coming out of state. And in twenty twenty four, uh our um Mill Creek collection has continued to trend really high. Although the total for the year, or excuse me, for the period went down by one percent, so but if we compare. Um just the Mill Creek co- collection for twenty twenty four versus twenty twenty three, that change is about ten thousand. Um whereas both the um other state and out-of-state collections are both trending downward. Um but it would also be noticeable that if you compare twenty twenty four against twenty twenty two. The change or the growth between this two period is about fourteen thousand dollars, which is still a good thing for the city. Are there any questions? Okay. So I'm going to go back to our uh revenues. Um the uh other thing that I'd like to point out here are the um. The charges for goods and services are we are also below, and we've seen this decline. Particularly in the um development fee services in our passport, as well in some of our recreation um fees. Um whereas the fines and fas- fines and penalties are also down, however, if we looked, I looked at the data. And let me show you that slide for a little bit. Okay, so what I did was I pulled the nine-year history just for the um for this category, just to see where we're at. Um and so for the four-month period for twenty twenty four, we are about run trending about ten thousand a month. Whereas in twenty twenty three, we were only trending five thousand a month. So I think the efforts that are being done by I by by our public safety officers, considering about four or five of them are still. And five of them are still um in training, that has already started to um improve. However, we uh we compare it to pre-COVID, of course, pre-COVID, we are trending significantly high every year. Of course.
I just pointed clarification for me, so in twenty twenty four, we have. The number forty thousand six hundred and two, that was traffic infractions, tickets written, is that what that is, or is that people pulled over?
I have to ask the chief. No, those are the dollars that we've collected from the traffic tickets.
That you've co- collected?
Collected.
Yeah, those would be infractions issued, that we've collected from those infractions issued, but not necessarily for that first quarter, it's just a a first quarter. Collection.
Actually, four months, sorry.
Oh, through four, through four of twenty four, and then it's in twenty twenty three.
That's the twelve month.
That's a twelve-month total.
Correct.
Of of uh dollars collected.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back. Are there any other questions?
Um, I don't have a question per se, I think I just want to make a comment as we're having this discussion over this. Um because I don't want the takeaway to be that I want the officers to be out like making tickets just so that we can make money. Um so I I want to make sure that's clear, um so for me, um I want, I think we. The discussion needs to be, when it comes time for our budget for the biennium next year, we need to step back and just take a realistic. View of where where the fines are, where the money is coming in, and then set our budget accordingly. Because there are multiple things at play here, and one, we can't, people may or may not be out speeding to be. To get pulled over to to pay a ticket, so I just want to make sure that we're taking a really good look at this next time and not overly projecting what's expected. And that we're realistic when we're doing our biennium next time. Um council member DeKay first, and then councilmember Sackler.
I I want to say thank you very much for doing this in-depth look, um picking that out and and providing this additional information, I find that really helpful, I used to be part. Of that finance committee, and so I want, is this one of the things that you guys discussed and then thought to bring up? Fantastic, I really appreciate that, cause I had it, I had a note about this section, and so I can see why you um called it out, so thank you for. I'm sure taking the time to put this all together, but it is very helpful for us to see, um and for us also just to to understand the the history of um. Of the department and also just in general, the numbers, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I I just wanted to uh piggyback on that comment from Mayor Protam. I don't think any, I I know I do not want to see us just write tickets to generate money, that's not what I'm trying to say either. The the point of clarification that I wanted to see is that. We had significantly more money in penalties and fines. In like, say, pre-COVID sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, all the way through. And then um what's interesting is that uh when we came out of that. We came out at a at a much lower number that didn't even come close to coming back to the original number, so. I guess my my point of clarification was, were we writing more tickets back then than we are now? Are there more people that, I just want to make sure that we enforce the law, that if somebody is speeding, they, you know. We we don't want it to be known as a place where you can speed and, you know, you'll get a ticket. Um that's my my only point was, I just want to make sure that we're enforcing the law, not trying to generate more money out of tickets, but just. Uh it it seems, I don't think we were more, um I don't think our drivers were 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 that much worse back in. Pre-COVID times than they are now, like that, that's not realistic, so that's the point of clarification I'm trying to get to, I'm just in spirit of clarification.
I'm gonna go go back, pardon me. All right, um so I'm gonna go to the general fund year-to-date expenditures, and uh just to note. That this graph represents um the uh impact of the um the ARPA fund decision that was made in um. In April, on April ninth. Um so. Year-to-date, the general fund has uh expended eleven point one million dollars, of which fifty one percent of that um. Or five point seven mil- million of that is spent on personnel. Um and then our professional services um includes uh certain expenditures, specifically the um the general uh liability premiums that we paid, that's six hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Um for the two-year period already, it also includes one million of legal um expenses. Um and then our capital investment or our capital expenses is only about three percent. Um but looking at the same um, the same expenditures, uh and I'm sending it to you here. Um based on on by department, um but this time it's before the ordinance twenty twenty four nine th- nine thirteen. Um so that we could see how that affected everything. Okay, so our adjusted budget um for the general fund is twenty-three point eight million dollars, and then our ARPA. Was um six million dollars, and this six million dollars is the adjusted budget, and it includes that five hundred and some thousand dollars. Of of interest that ARPA earns, and it gets transferred over to the general fund. So um through March, uh we've spent thirteen point seven, thirteen point eight million dollars, fifty-seven point nine percent spent. We are in total for the general fund, we are under the benchmark, however, there are several um. Departments that are over, we have the legislative at seventy-two point one percent, and I'll get into that in a minute. Um we also have the information technology, human ser- human resources, as well as our um non-departmental um trending above the benchmark. Um for the legislative, the nine hundred, the one hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars in here. Includes the um payments to your consultants for your strategic planning, um for the short term and the long term. And then for the I T and human resources, as well as the non-departmental, those includes. The one-time payments, the annual payments that gets paid, you know, at the beginning of the year, as opposed to being spread out over the years. Um so the information technology will include all of majority of our software programming. And then um also our general liability premium, and that's reflected here in the non-departmental. The human services, you will note, is slightly above the benchmark, but that includes the legal costs that are um incurred from um. Whether it's H R related or union, um they're reflected here, as well as the investment that the city made for the leadership training. That was um done uh a few months ago, and then everybody else is trending below. Um you'll notice too that ARPA, this one point, this one million, which is seventeen point six percent. Um includes certain purchases, so it includes the two hundred and fifty thousand that we spent on the loader. Um and it includes as well some of the, I'm gonna forget some of them. Um the security system that we've paid the security cameras would be uh a part of this one million. Okay, so this is before the um April nine um action, and then so the next slide. I wanted to um show you first the budget authorization that you adopted with this ordinance, so what you gave, what you have directed uh staff. Or I should say what you approved for us to do is that um we were gonna take three point nine million from the police. Cause they used to be eleven point one million, and we were going to fund police into ARPA. So then that would leave three point nine million in there as um available for the general fund to use. And so that in turn, you you told us that. You wanted to make sure that that three point nine million savings doesn't get spent anywhere else. You wanted to have visibility for that, so what the staff did is instead of creating a separate department. We went, we went ahead and transferred it over to legislative. So you saw this one in the previous slide as being uh two hundred and seventy-three thousand, and now it's at four point one million. So that's on the budget side. ARPA did not change. It didn't change, so in total, we just shifted three point nine from police to legislative, everything else stayed the same. So then after we did the budget transfer. We went ahead and did the actual, and so the actual are the green items, and so the first action that we did is we took. The March, excuse me, yes, uh April twenty twenty three. Um public safety salaries and overtime, all the way through March thirty-one, twenty twenty four, and that amounted to two point nine, two point eight million. So we moved this actual cost from police, this used to be at about seven. And then we moved it down here into ARPA, and so it went from one million to three point seven million. And then as part of the ordinance, you also said, oh, by the way, these items that we've approved previously, but don't have actual contracts. Will be hard to defend based off of the federal guidance, uh 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 based on the uniform guidance for federal money. And so we said, well, all these other items are still gonna move forward, they're gonna be. Um now, we're gonna rebrand them, instead of saying ARPA uh ARPA projects, we have now, we we're trying to rebrand them to say these are your. Uh rehabilitation, preservation and beautification projects. And so those projects, um I believe are would be the following. Uh we have the personnel manual, professional services, uh it also includes the um certain roadway safety equipment purchases. Um the city entrance and wayfinding, and then the park maintenance amenities, as well as the substation I T equipment, so those three, uh excuse me, those items, these projects. Were already moving forward, and we had actual expenses here, and altogether, those are hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty-three thousand. That were in ARPA, but we said, we're, we, they can't meet the federal requirements, so we're gonna move them up here. So earlier, this was at a hundred and ninety-seven, because then I moved the hundred and twenty-three here, it came up to three hundred and twenty. And so the net effect of that. Excuse me. Um is a two point six million transfer of actual expenses into ARPA. So that is the total effect of the ARPA ordinance that you adopted in April. And so this looks like then from the fifty-seven point um for total expenses from fifty-seven percent, we are now down to forty-eight. Forty-six point eight percent with um. The um ARPA, now instead of showing seventeen percent, we are now at sixty-one percent spent. And in fact, these expenses through uh March thirty-one are the expenses that we reported to the federal um. Government that was required for ARPA reporting last um April thirty. I'm gonna pause and ask if there are any questions. Yes.
So just as a point of clarification, how how much has been. Spent on ARPA projects, I see the hundred twenty-three thousand, but there's more than that.
Correct, so it'll be the hundred and twenty-three.
Mm-hmm.
Plus the two point eight million. Of public safety police costs that we shifted over to ARPA. As well as the one million dollars that we spent for the projects that we've already moved forward, so like the security cameras, the loader, um what else?
Are those ones are under contract, the million?
Correct.
And and does that include the um in uh compensation, employee compensation dollars that were paid? Okay, good, that's everything, thanks.
All right. So for our legal costs, this is the citywide cost. Um, uh, through March of twenty twenty-four, we've spent two hundred and sixteen to date for the fifteen months, it about, it, this amounts to one point one million. And one million of that is general fund and the rest are all of the other funds. Okay, for the special revenues, these are the, um, uh, special revenues, the, the two that I'd like to, um, focus on. So our City Hall North Fund, they're trending above, um, or their revenues are trending almost to the benchmark and the revenues reflect the increased, um, leases that we have over there. And we, we think we're going to, um, exceed the budget because we are now taking, I believe, two more, um, in the next, um, few weeks. Um, also, um, in line with that, our expenses is, you know, at benchmark and this includes even the, um, their share of the general, uh, premium liabilities, excuse me, general liability premiums. Um, and then our opioid settlement fund. So we reported or we collected almost, um, eighty-eight thousand dollars. This includes, um, the settlements one and two, as well as a prepayment from, I believe, uh, distributor, um, one or settlement one, they prepaid year seven. Um, this, uh, so we would for sure, uh, be exceeding the budget because remember, um, a few months back, also in April, you also approved settlement number three and the potential for that is about seventy-five thousand. So we, we're going to um, have high earnings on that. Okay, so for capital projects, only wanted to, um, raise, uh, the, uh, provide more information on the read receipts. We have one point three of the one point six million that we've collected so far, we are seventy-five um, percent collected. And of that, we have, um, REIT revenues coming in at one point three million. And now for our investment portfolio for quarter four. So to date for that quarter, our total portfolio, um, is at about four, forty-two point eight million dollars with, um, LGIP at thirty-seven, um, million, that makes up about eighty-eight point three percent of our portfolio. And then the remaining, um, uh, percentage is between our US securities and US obligations, uh, of five million. So to date for LGIP, we've received half a million. So this is three months and this represents the, um, an average, um, earnings for like a twelve-month period of, of five point four one percent, um, compared to four point five percent in twenty twenty-three. And again, this rate is going to be consistent with our federal funds rates. So recall in the first, um, couple of slides that I showed you, the federal funds rate is at five and a quarter to five point five and that will be consistent. So, so long as that remains high, our LGIP would, uh, will be trending the same. And then our US treasuries, the average now that we're earning is about three point six, excuse me, three point one percent. For twenty twenty-four, it was one point six five percent, um, in twenty twenty-three. Um, the earnings that we have in LGIP gets reinvested into the fund. Um, whereas the thirty-five thousand that we get from, um, the US treasuries and securities get transmitted to our checking account to support operations. Um, for the quarter, we had, um, a maturity, uh, of, uh, with a face value of, um, a million dollars. So we received a million dollars, but during the, the time, the coupon rate for that investment was at five point thirty-eight percent. And then we turned around a few days later and made a purchase and this purchase is going to last for three years at the coupon rate of four point three percent. And of course, this amount that you see the two hundred and thirty-nine, uh, includes the accrued interest related to, to that, um, investment. That concludes my report and I'm happy to answer additional questions if you have any.
Any other question?
Just one.
Um, Councilmember Paddock?
Uh, question and a comment, actually. The comment, well, thank you for fantastic report and, um, kind of taking us all through that walk uh, around the ARPA funds and the change in the ARPA funds. Um, I think it was important that you were able to show that there isn't a, a magic bucket of money that has suddenly showed up to make it look like our, our, uh, revenues have gone up by three million dollars over the last month. That would be an incorrect assumption that, uh, folks might come to. Um, I know you're already thinking ahead on this, so maybe you can tell us a little bit about what you're seeing kind of over the next year and what we might want to start thinking about around budgeting for twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Seems like, uh, if I'm reading between the lines and then some of your comments, that the revenues are running a little cool in comparison to, um, expectations, uh, expenses a little hot. Um, do you see that panning out in twenty-five, twenty-six?
So remember that, um, of, of financing, construction or the structure where at some point in time, we're gonna go upside down and that would hold true. Because majority of the time when we're doing the budget, we're forecasting as if everybody is going to do their work, everybody will be filled and all of our contracts are gonna pull forward. So when we're doing the budget, the assumption is we're going to fully fund and therefore if our expenses, and that's nor- normally our expenses are gonna run higher uh, than our, our revenues because our hands are tied pretty much because taxes, we cannot inadvertently just raise taxes because we want to. There are limits to that. And so, but luckily for the city of Mill Creek, you have that capacity that we can tap into. The other thing that staffs is working on and we have it in our work plan is to do the citywide, um, fee study. So that would help. Um, and of course, all the other programming, even recreation, they've made increases in some of the programming that we have, but you have to consider the timing. So you're, you're seeing twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, that's still coming out of, I know it, it may sound like that's old news, but it's truly, we're still coming out of COVID. And so there are still restrictions out there, I, I, that um, in terms of, um, our capacity. So even, even though we increase our recreation programming, the question is where is our capacity for that? Right? Um, as well as we want to get to a point where, um, and staff is looking at this, what is truly the city's baseline services? And how do we really fund that? Before we fund the other special projects, we want the new and shiny things, but we want to consider how would it be sustainable for us as we move forward? And we have to think about as we, you know, review projects, we have to think about, um, well, if we buy this project or we install this project, how are we gonna make sure that we're gonna maintain it for forever and ever, pretty much? And so there are a lot of competing, um, priorities out there and truly we are, staff is waiting for, um, the recommendations or what your three or five-year priorities would be. Because that would really inform staff on how we would plan ahead in the next coming years and even trying to figure or make recommendations to us, how do we, you know, how do we pivot? Because if we really want to grow, all those things are just really unanswered. But for the near term, I think, um, the biggest thing that we would need from council would be the truly what is the, the, the three or five-year priorities.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Amina. And thank you for spending all the time with the finance committee to go over this in depth as well and answer, um, any questions that, that were had. And, um, I think, um, to Councilmember Paddock's point, I think really this kind of undermines that we, we are gonna have to start thinking more seriously about economic development and, and bringing in, um, some, some revenue. So, um, thank you for, for all the work you do in this great presentation tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we move on to new business and we have a couple of appointments. So first we have, um, the Planning Commission, um, appointment and I believe Councilmember Paddock is going to, um, lead us in that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I would like to make a motion to appoint Jennifer Schulte to a three-year term expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven and reappoint Mr. Benjamin Briles to serve a three-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven to the Planning Commission.
Second. Um, I've got a motion in a second. So, um, I'm gonna speak to it real quick because we did have, um, multiple wonderful, um, people who applied for the Planning Commission. And so I'm just really excited that, um, we had such great candidates and, um, that, um, Benjamin Briles wanted to continue and that Jennifer Schulte, um, was an extremely impressive, um, person to interview. So I'm, um, really happy that we have so many great candidates in the city willing to volunteer and, um, and I'm very excited about our choice. So, um, with that, um, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes four zero. And next up, we have the, an appointment for the Art and Beautification Board and Councilmember Steckler is gonna lead us in that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, on April twenty-third, we had a number of candidates who came in, interviewed for two open positions on the A and B board. I'd like to thank, uh, Councilmember Duque and Councilmember Paddock who joined me in the interviews. And we, uh, made a, a decision on two candidates that we would like to propose. And with that, I'm going to propose a motion to appoint Deep Mangat to an unexpired three-year term ending October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five and Malik. And Malik, I know you're here in the audience and I hope I say your name right. I'm really trying. Malik Olanriwaju? Oh, I did it. I did it. I'll tell the people on the, on the camera, uh, let's say camera talk. To an unexpired three-year term ending October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six on the Arts and Beautification Board.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Anyone want to speak anymore? Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes four zero. Congratulations. All right. Next up, we have a resolution related to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five Public MS Four Catch Basin and Stormwater Facility Inspection Project. And we've got Marian Soltani.
Hello.
Um, who's our project engineer. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers. Um, today I want to talk about, I want a request for authorization to sign the contract for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five Public MS Four Catch Basin and Stormwater Facility Inspection Project. So first I want to give you an overview of the project, then I want to talk about the inspection requirements. Uh, I want to give you a summary of the RFQ that happened earlier and so, and then eventually I want to talk about the budget and expenses. So city has two thousand seven hundred fifty catch basin and twenty-seven stormwater facilities. Inspecting these catch basin and stormwater facilities are required to prevent the potential storm failure in future or maybe potential floods. Also, catch basin inspection and facility inspection is required by Western Washington Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit. These inspections need to happen every two year for city. And to do this inspection, so they need right-of-way permit from us and also from Washdott. And the result from these inspections will help us to maintain the catch basin and these facilities. And also will help us open completion of this project. We can work on a project for cleaning these catch bases. So staff has advertised for request for qualification in August twenty twenty-three and three, received three proposals. And EA Engineering Science and Technology Inc. was selected. Their scope of work shows that they will do fifty percent of catch basin inspection each year and then hundred percent of stormwater facility inspections. So they, their contract will be for two years and they're anticipated, starting day will be, will be May thirteenth. So for funding, um, council members have approved six hundred sixteen thousand dollar on the budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four for inspection. And from that budget, almost four hundred sixty-six thousand left. This contract cost two hundred, almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we are under budget. And yeah, I'm here for request for authorization for signing that contract. Um, thanks for the opportunity. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Perfect. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, um, nobody has any questions? Um, then do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with EA Engineering Science and Technology, Inc. For the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five Public MS Four Catch Basin and Stormwater Facility Inspection Project in an amount not to exceed three hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred one dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, Seena, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes four zero. Thank you so much for the presentation tonight.
It's really easy to get budgets approved when they, uh, are under budget.
Next up, we have, um, the resolution related to Federal Highway Administration Safe Streets for All Grant Acceptance. Um, Robert Bean, project engineer.
Mayor Protem, council, honored guests, thank you very much for allowing me to come here and speak about the Safe Streets for All program, which is a strategy by the United States Department of Transportation to have zero fatalities or serious injuries to any pedestrian within the city streets. The safe streets. In twenty twenty-three, the city realized that they were eligible for, uh, Safe Streets for All grant, applied for that and received a, uh, authorization for a grant up to two hundred thousand dollars. There's two types of grants that they offer. The Planning and Demonstrative Grant, which is putting together a comprehensive safety action plan is, which is where the city is today. From that action plan, we'll be able to prioritize and develop projects that would allow us to apply for grants to implement it, uh, in the future. This grant for two hundred thousand dollars has a city participation of forty thousand dollars, which is this shown here as the contribution. We noticed in the CIP that there's another project, NM zero 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 seven, the citywide safe routes for school and assembly study that lines up with this perfect. So we're moving to move those funds into the same project. The comprehensive safety action plan that we're gonna work on will define and encourage leadership's commitment to goal-setting, uh, develop planning structure, perform a safety analysis, show how we're going to engage the public and collaborate with our stakeholders, give consideration to lesser equality areas of the city for these type of projects, uh, recommend policy and process changes, uh, develop strategy and for project selection and then show how the city, uh, is being, um, showing progress and transparency with using these funds. The city has sixty months to expend these funds, but we are working, uh, to develop our projects so we can go for a grant to implement them. So we'll use that much faster than that. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I have one question.
Councilmember Paddock?
Um, one question, one comment. Question, um, how, how long do you actually think the study will take? It sounds like it's not gonna take sixty months. Is there idea how long the timeline is gonna be?
We're looking, uh, at no, we're looking at about, uh, nine to fourteen months. Because we still have to go through the selection process and sometimes that takes a little bit.
Okay, thank you. And, um, the best selection of ties for a presentation that I think I've seen. Yeah, yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have, uh, a resolution here that we move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute this US DOT Safe Streets for All grant to aid in the development of the city comprehensive safety action.
Can I ask a question again real quick though? Um, you probably said it and I just didn't catch it, but where was the four, the city has forty thousand dollar, the city was responsible for forty thousand? The city was responsible for forty thousand dollars? Is, is that in our budget already? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So even with additional forty, we still have to spend our board?
That's correct. It's twenty percent participation, and that's typical for most federal grants.
Do I have someone to give the message?
I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the US DOT Safe Streets for All SS4A Grant to aid in the development of the city comprehensive safety action plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Next up, we have the Joint Planning Commission meeting related to the Comprehensive Plan Update under our study session, well, I can't talk, study session. And Mike Todd, the Public Works Director, is going to lead us in that. And I believe, I was under the understanding that we were going to do a roundtable. So are we moving over to the table? It's not.
Not a roundtable tonight. We, so we have some planning commission members. We could do that if you'd like to, but I think mostly, let me tell you what's going on. You can decide where you want to sit. So welcome Mayor Protem and council members and some planning commission members here and online. We could do it in that format, but in general, what we're going to do, we're trying to keep council and planning commission and the whole community kind of lined up as we do our comprehensive plan process. Mandy Roberts, Roberts from OTAC, our consultant, is here to give us kind of a presentation of what we've already done in terms of the housing and the zoning, kinds, land use kinds of things. And then kind of kick off this economic development topic is the next topic that the planning commission is going to take up at their meeting on May sixteenth. So we thought this was an opportune moment to get all seven of you, or four, the four best out of the seven, to get involved in a discussion about, make sure you're, you understand what the planning commission is doing and how this role, how this element fits into the comp plan, and make sure your voices are heard. So if you'd like to do that around the table, we could. Or if you'd like to have a presentation and listen, that'd be fine. I would suggest, Mayor Protem, that if the planning commission members wanted to speak, you might allow them to do that within that session. However, you'd like to do it. I apologize, we're throwing you a curveball. But we don't have mics set up, set down there, so it would be. That's why I'm thinking it probably makes more sense here and have them come and make comments. So I apologize, we may have thrown you a curveball. So with that, I'm going to throw over to Mandy. Most civils got an idea. Go ahead.
Sorry. Just for protocol sake, if there's a quorum, planning commission quorum, I would recommend that planning commission open up a meeting, within meeting, and then close after the discussion.
But. Correct, good call. Do we have a quorum of the?
Well, we have to check.
We have people online.
So we've got Dave Hamilton is online, and I don't see any other planning commission members online. So we've got Benjamin Brials and Matt Nolan here in the chambers. Like, that's three of the seven, so you do not have a quorum. So I think the record could reflect that those three were present, but there is no protocol for them to open a meeting because of that. But that's a good thing to check. With all the confusion, I suggest we give it to Mandy to take away the presentation. And then they get the discussion going. Get me out of here, right? I'm not helping. Thanks.
Okay, I was, sorry, I'm just looking at, I was looking over at Grant, because I just want to make sure, because it was listed as a joint planning commission meeting? So they, so, so do we need to state in a certain way that there's no quorum? So we didn't call a meeting? Or me just saying that just now, does that?
Since we lack a quorum, the planning commissioner, the planning commissioners present are online. There really isn't a basis for having a joint meeting. So I think the, the protocol as outlined by Director Todd would be appropriate to have presentation. And then if you, Mayor Protem, could offer an opportunity for the planning commissioners to comment after the presentation, perhaps that would be the best way to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members and those planning commissioner members who are here and members of the public. My name is Mandy Roberts. I am a principal planner with OTAC, and I am your consultant for the Comprehensive Plan Update, which we've been working on for some time now and making progress. As we promised, we are here to provide a briefing on our progress, and we will also be back as we progress through this process. So with that, I think I'll go through the presentation slides. I do want to mention that my colleague Andrew Oliver with Leland Consulting Group is also here and will present some of this update to you this evening. Let's just make sure. Okay, so we're going to just do a quick reminder of our approach to the comprehensive plan and some of the aspects that are driving the need for the update. We have been doing some community engagement, so I'll provide a very brief update on that. There are some opportunities for input on that. So after the presentation, I think it might be good to just make sure we have discussion around that if, if possible. And then I'll give you a progress report on the land use and housing elements of the plan. Those have been progressing through with work with the planning commission. And we've got some ideas that we want to share with you. Get your input on those. The next element that we'll be working with the planning commission on, as, as Director Todd mentioned, is economic development. And I thought that was a great segue this evening when, when it was mentioned that we need to start thinking more about economic development. So this will be the perfect opportunity to get some input from that. And then we'll talk about our next steps. So just a reminder on the comprehensive plan update. This is part of a twenty-year look ahead to twenty forty-four. Cities are required to update their comprehensive plans every ten years. So in twenty thirty-four, you'll be doing this again. But this is our chance to look ahead for the next twenty years, and Mill Creek can really put together a comprehensive plan. There are several state, regional, and local planning provisions that we are making sure that we're consistent with, that we're required to be consistent with. And those include, the Department of Commerce has a checklist for updates and what, what policies need to be updated. Pigeonstown Regional Council, as part of Vision twenty fifty, has their multi-county planning policies, the MPPs, that we need to look at and, and find consistency. So Homish County also has county-wide planning policies, CPPs. There have been pieces of legislation that have been passed by the state legislature around middle housing and affordable housing that we're considering. There has also been legislation around climate change, which is House Bill eleven eighty-one, climate resiliency that we'll be thinking about. And so a lot of the work that we've been doing is really aligning with these elements. But we also endeavor to make sure that this is Mill Creek's plan. And so we're having engagement around that. We're working closely with the planning commission. We're making sure that while we're aligning with the state, regional, and county policies, we're also making this plan about Mill Creek in its future. Just a little bit of a reminder of the elements of the plan. These are all the elements that we'll be including in the plan. As I mentioned, land use and housing are really coming along while we're ready to show those tonight. Next, we'll be working on economic development. I put a little question in here. Economic development, economic vitality. Some cities are calling their element economic vitality. I think that's kind of interesting, just for consideration. Sounds a little bit more exciting to me. And then after economic development, we'll be moving into environment and parks, recreation, and open space. We're going to look at those two elements together, kind of makes sense. Then we'll look at transportation. And then finally, utilities and capital facilities. And at the end of my presentation, I'll kind of share our schedule with you, just to remind you of that. So for engagement, we had a really great presence at the extravaganza event. There was a lot going on there. A lot of parents, a lot of children, a lot of people to connect with. And we, that was when we were letting people know about our online survey. And so we were able to get quite a bit of interest in that. We also had a presence at the State of the City luncheon in April. We handed out postcards. We have been partnering with a strategic plan online and, and that survey. We're kind of sharing data and information for both efforts, which is really efficient use of your funds. And then May fifteenth, there's going to be a city chat announcement coming out that will also refer people to the survey. I want to say we have about a hundred responses or more coming through. Is that about right, Jody? And we will be closing this survey, which is more kind of a high-level vision survey on May nineteenth at nine AM. So we just want to encourage everybody to go in and take the survey. Here's just a couple of sample questions. Again, the survey results haven't, we haven't received all of them yet. But, you know, we're starting to ask people about what are, what are the best, or what are the attributes that best contribute to the quality of life in Mill Creek today? And so people really like the quality of their neighborhoods. They really like the high-quality and extensive network of parks, trails, and open spaces, and many other things mentioned. What would be, what would you be most interested in seeing more of in Mill Creek in the next twenty years? More local restaurants and retail shops, economic vitality, more trails and connecting sidewalks, more parks. So even though people are really happy about the parks and trails that we have now, they want more from, from these early results, not, not totally finalized. So we do have a QR code that's on, I think it's on several publications around that you can scan. But I just wanted to leave this up for a minute in case anybody in, in the recording or anybody is interested in going in, taking the survey if they haven't done so yet. It's a SurveyMonkey survey. And so it's backslash R, backslash, backslash W N seven nine F L G. So we'd really love to get more participation. So please go in and take the survey. Coming up later this month, May twenty-first and twenty-second, we are going to be holding some workshop sessions with various groups and interests. And we'll have that here, well, I guess actually over at the other city building upstairs. We did a similar process when we were working on the Mill Creek Boulevard Sub area plan. Really great meetings. It, this kind of approach allows us the opportunity to kind of drill into the details and the values and considerations that are important to these groups. So we're working to pull this together. If city council members or planning commission members have suggestions on particular groups or interests that we need to be sure to involve, we would love to hear about that tonight after the, after the presentation, when we, when we get into discussion. All right, let's just talk about land use and housing. We've been working on those elements. We have draft goals and policies. I believe those have been published and they're online. People can access those, provide comments on those as they're being developed. Some of the key ideas in land use are, you know, the, the need to, and again, these, some of this is legislatively driven, but the need to offer a diverse range of established neighborhoods in the city. So we want to make sure that we're preserving the quality of neighborhoods that people love today in Mill Creek. We're also offering new neighborhoods for people to come in, and with that, a range of different housing types. And that would include having more mixed-use, multifamily neighborhoods as well. And with more people in some of the areas that we've talked about, including the Mill Creek Boulevard area, the idea is that this would create a more of a customer base for businesses, commercial activity, particularly in town, in town center, and in areas where growth would occur in the future. Another key theme is really improving upon healthy lifestyle options. So giving people more access to the outdoors and recreation opportunities is something that we've talked a lot about. There, there are some potential areas for annexation. We've been talking about making sure that we approach that in a logical manner with orderly transition, that we're thinking about the costs, infrastructure capital costs that might be associated with that in the future. The comprehensive plan would not be a mechanism for annexation, but we will have goals, goals and policies that will set the city up for thinking about that in the future. Coordination with other organizations, including neighboring jurisdictions, and ensuring equitable access to city resources, programs, and development processes. Talking about housing, again, people love Mill Creek neighborhoods today. There's a lot of great neighborhoods and housing stock. So preserving the vitality of those is a really important part of the plan. At the same time, accommodating a sufficient supply of housing throughout Mill Creek to meet the needs of the community. And we've given a past presentation on this, but House Bill twelve twenty really requires all jurisdictions to evaluate the income levels in their community and the related housing needs of these, or housing units shown in the blue and purple bars that you see there. And so we've shown this in the past. I won't go into a great amount of detail, but we're seeing that there is a need. We have plenty of, in the purple, we have plenty of one hundred and twenty percent plus area median income capacity in the city. So remember, the area median income are, is the household income, average household income. But we're lacking in some of the income bands. We call them income bands that are less than the fifty to eighty percent. And so we need to make sure that it, as we're looking at land use capacity, we're providing enough capacity for those income levels in the community. And that just relates to providing a variety of housing types, improved, and providing improved housing choices for, for everyone in the community. This is something that we are required to do by the state. Another thing that we've been thinking about is just that, you know, not everyone wants to live in a, in a big house. And there are lots of people who are downsizing in the community. Older people who want to stay in Mill Creek, but maybe they don't want to have a great big house and a great big yard to maintain. So are there some other types of housing at various scales that could be offered to people throughout the community? And you do have a variety of housing now. So what do we need to do to just add to that and supplement that to meet the community's needs all the way to twenty forty-four? Some of the planning commissioners' feedback on land use and housing elements include making sure, we have a lot of words around pedestrian-friendly, pedestrian accessibility, pedestrian mobility, making sure that we're giving bicyclists as much attention as we're thinking about goals and policies, being intentional about that. Making sure that the development that, that occurs here is high-quality. And so that speaks to really continuing to support the need for design guidelines and really good guidance related to development activity. Coordinating with other jurisdictions during annexation, including policies around preserving the existing housing stock and existing neighborhoods, mentioning the high-income band area as something that we have, we have capacity for. And the jobs-to-housing balance as something to work on here, which is also economic development-related. But around the region, as we grow, we want to bring into balance as much as possible, especially in suburban communities, more people living and working in proximity. So giving more people the opportunity to live closer to where they work so they don't have to make a long commute. That's just a growth, a smart growth strategy. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to talk a little bit about economic development. And we'll go through that, and then we'll stop and have a discussion. Or would you like to do that now?
Um.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Actually, I need to take a moment before the next presentation. And we need to have a roll call of the planning commission now and open the planning commission meeting, because I believe we now have a quorum.
Who would be our fourth? Okay. Would you want to do the roll call?
And then, and then we can resume.
So do we want to do a roll call for this and we will call a special meeting of the Mill Creek Planning Commission to order?
Joint.
Joint. Okay. And so can we have a roll caller? Do you have your list?
I, I, Commissioner Noyd.
Present.
Commissioner Burunda.
Present.
Commissioner Brials. Oh, Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum for, so we will call the meeting to order.
Thank you. And then I guess we, I guess if everybody else, do we want to ask questions on this part first and then do the next presentation? I think I'd rather do that while it's fresh in my, fresh on my brain. And because I have a question. So that's what happens when you run the meeting, you get to do it the way you want.
Please let me know if I need to backtrack to any slides.
Um, I guess my main question for me was, I had a question under the recommendations of the planning commission. The part about annexation, that language, the coordinate with the jurisdictions during annexation. But we have not approved doing any annexation yet. So not that, I don't know, I don't want to start rumors. So I don't know if we will or we won't. So because the way I just said that, I realized could be taken differently. So I didn't know, when we look at that lane, language, I would rather make that clear that there, there will be ongoing conversations on annexation and depending upon the outcome of those that we would need to coordinate. However, yeah, words meant that to show that we have not approved annexation at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Very good. We'll make that more clear.
And Councilmember Steckler.
Great presentation. Thank you. Had a few, a couple, no, a couple of questions, a couple additions. You asked about additional groups to reach out to. I was going to recommend PTA is a great one for touching on the families of our students. Also, some of the community groups we have here, like the Rotarians, Kowanians. They're very much involved in what's, what they see as opportunities to grow and improve our, our city and our community. I think they would be good ones to provide. I also wanted to call out, you, you touched on something about how we like our little housing development names here in Mill Creek. And we were talking about, I know nothing's set, discussions have been talking around a multifamily place on Mill Creek Boulevard. And I, I don't know if you've given any thought, I would support it if you had to giving that a name. So if that was a community that was moving into, it would be like River Crossing, which is a community, which doesn't really cross a river, just crosses a, I think it's a dry riverbed. But anyway, it's another community that is connected to Mill Creek. But it's nice that they have a name, like we have all the other developments and stuff. So something to, to recommend is to give it a name to, to create a community, even though you're in a large multifamily, your, your community in that, that, in that group. And then finally, I know there's a couple of other council members who support this as well, fortunately not here tonight. But when you were talking about our desire to continue to have high end, not high income, quality housing. I mean, it's like you, you, you know, didn't do very well to put a low income housing development of fifty thousand dollar homes years ago in, in the middle of Mill Creek somewhere, because it just didn't fill with, with the community and, and, and such. You talked about wanting to make sure and provide a, I loved hearing you say this, a solution to those people who want to downsize, but want to have a smaller space without the house, the yard to take care of. I know the, the other council members and myself really would love to see us find some way, if we could, to add condominiums to that. So that people have the opportunity to purchase. I mean, it's easy to purchase a duplex, you know, but if you can get a condominium, a nice, high quality condominium, like the ones we have behind town center, they're a great example. They, it's, it's a place for, I know especially forcing the downsizing issue. If you really want to get rid of your yard, you don't even want to, don't even want a duplex law, you know, land. You just want to be in a condo with an elevator that goes up in your parking garage, something like that. So we really support condos. If there's any way to get that, and we've also talked to our legislators about it as well, because there are some legislative flaws I don't quite understand, but have, are a challenge for developers to provide for this. So if we can find a way to work, address that, work around that, but those, those three things, I, I just wanted to make a comment on those. Thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Councilmember D K.
Thank you very much. I actually had a question on this particular side because it's, since we have the planning, since this feedback from the planning commission. I was curious, because I think I, I may have missed this then, the mention high income bands in what relation, because I was able to understand that coordinate with other jurisdictions during annexation, meaning like if we do annex, we need to make sure we coordinate, but what, what was that one in particular to?
Yes, I.
Looks like David has raised his hand, David.
I, I brought that up and it's sort of a, maybe a little bit of a pushback. We got all this information from the Department of Commerce. And it seems like everything we've, most of everything we've seen has been addressed to, you know, low income levels. All that type of thing. And this is a comprehensive plan for the entire city. And there's, from what I can see, there's not much mention of the rest of the city. It's all focused on this new direction we've gotten from the Department of Commerce and that provided a concern for me.
I appreciate that. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. I have one more thing and then I'm gonna, then I'm gonna look and see if anybody on the planning commission has anything that they wanted to discuss from this first group. Also, I did want to also mention a little bit what Councilmember Steckler said. Under the community engagement, I'm just concerned that we haven't gotten out to enough people. So I, I would like to see us maybe look at doing something, can we, I don't know, can we do something with the peach jar? That goes out to all the schools, for all the parents to see. Have we reached out to the association, to the MCCA and other associations with the information to have them distribute? Asking for feedback from people. And also I wouldn't mind having like a digital, something myself so that I could go, so we can, for us, so that we can go and share it on social media or wherever with our contact lists and people that we know. And maybe even some other ideas that I'm not thinking of right now. And I saw Councilmember Steckler light up. So maybe he thought of some ideas based off what I just said.
Great suggestion. I agree with you. We, we do want to try and reach out to more people. Is there any way, we do have the funds, some funds available to do even just a mailing to every home in Mill Creek. I mean, I would love to see us do that. I know there's a cost, but a postcard mailing, just a postcard mailing of, of the survey with the, with the QR code on it, but I think would be a, a great opportunity. Also, I'm going to talk later about the Mill Creek Electronic Recycling Event, which was phenomenal this year. And one of the things we did was we asked every person who came where, one person was keeping a tally of where they found out about it. And it was ninety percent or more came from online. And it came from, gosh, Councilmember D K probably knows this better than I do, but Mill Creek Uncensored. Yeah, that, and there's a couple of other ones. And also, believe it or not, if you really want to reach a lot of people, and I was surprised because I thought we were basically only older people had electronic recycling, but that's not true. We did a lot of Instagrams, but they unfortunately only last for like one day and you gotta redo them again. But the return we got was phenomenal on those. Instagram was actually the highest rated online source that we got. This is a survey of probably two, three hundred cars that came through. But it was interesting just to see where the, the results were coming from. So again, I was, I agree with you. Social media would be a great, great opportunity and those, those are just a couple of suggestions.
Awesome. So now I want to see, did anyone from the planning commission have any comments on the first part of the presentation? Or anything that they wanted to say? Anybody in the room? You guys are good. Anybody online? I can't see everybody from the prep, but if you raise your hand and earlier when David raised his hand, it did show up. So. Okay, I think we're good. I don't see anybody else. So I guess we are ready to move on to the next part then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned, Andrew Oliver from Leland Consulting Group will walk us through some considerations related to economic development and then we'll pause and have some discussion around that. So Andrew, take it away. I can change the slides for you.
Great. Hi, everyone. Thanks, Mayor Brotem. That's good to be with you again. And we're going to talk a little bit about economic development today. And, you know, primarily in relation to the town, to the, well, the town center and the Mill Creek Boulevard sub area that we were talking about last time at the joint session we had a few months ago. But the planning commission is just in the midst of working now on the economic development element. And I've got a sort of big picture starting point and then we'll zoom in to some considerations for Mill Creek that we've been thinking about in the context of the progressive plan. This is a definition from PSRC. Pretty broad. What is economic development? Okay, efforts to improve the economic well-being and quality of life for a community by creating and retaining middle and high income jobs and growing the tax base through diversification of the local economy. You know, in, in the context of, of Mill Creek, this kind of has, you know, has certain considerations. You know, that are different from a, a larger city. And so we kind of wanted to focus on those today. I think you're on the next slide, Manny. So when we started talking to the planning commission about the economic development element of the comp plan, you know, we were thinking, well, what is it the city can do? You know, a city like Mill Creek, a smaller city, a more suburban city, mostly residentially focused. You know, so these are sort of large categories of things that we talked about with the planning commission that sort of made their way into the draft of the goals and policies, which of course you'll eventually see in a couple of months' time. You know, one key thing is supporting small businesses and this is something that Mill Creek, of course, has a, a lot of, of interest in with the town center and then already having a town center development there. So, you know, those could be small programs such as grants, things like storefront improvement programs are, are ways for the city to sort of provide opportunities for small businesses. A procurement in city contracts, there, there's various, you know, forms that that can take. Now, place making is something that we talked about a lot and we'll talk a little bit about more in few slides. Obviously, the town center, you know, already has a lot of great walkability, gathering places, environment for small businesses. Partnerships are important in, in, in general, as we've been talking about here, but especially with, you know, entities such as regional employers, developers, entrepreneurs. And one thing we've talked a little bit about with the planning commission has been, you know, the sort of marketing side of economic development. And, and that kind of goes into these bigger picture considerations of, of, you know, sort of larger industries or employers, which is one important element, of course, of thinking about economic development. And, and a lot of sort of outreach and, and that kind of thing can be accomplished through other organizations. And doesn't necessarily solely have to, you know, be the responsibility of the city. And then finally, infrastructure, and this relates to the sub area as well. City investment in roads, sidewalks, utilities, even sort of catalyzing sites for development or redevelopment through various investments that sort of signal to the development community that the city is, is looking forward to seeing something happening at location.
Andrew, I'm just, yeah, just add on to that too. I think one of the things that we've talked a lot about is with the potential of growth and change to the south of town center, really extending that look and feel of town center. So the, you know, the sense of being able to walk and bicycle from town center south and having it feel like an extension of town center. That's really also place making, right? And so whether you call it town center south or you come up with a specific name for the district as Councilmember Steckler was mentioning, there's an opportunity there that I think is important to recognize.
So I wanted to highlight a few things that, you know, that we've been thinking about. Yeah, and these, these are sort of, you know, connected to those bigger picture things on the previous slide, but a little more zoomed in here for, for Mill Creek specifically. And the first one is just what Manny was saying, you know, vibrant areas for economic activity and place making as a way of, of creating more economic activity, of bringing more economic vitality to the community. The opportunity to increase customer base in the, in, in the town center and in, in a new sub area. Customers from the city, customers from elsewhere. Obviously, this relates, you know, okay, we've been talking about sales tax revenue today as well. So maybe it's also a good fit for this discussion. But, you know, place making has a direct connection, not only to, you know, making a welcoming place where people can gather, but also directly to, to, you know, sales tax revenue for the city. And this also ties in with housing, as we talked about a couple of months ago with you at the last session. So, you know, there is, as Manny was just mentioning, the importance of a variety of housing types to serve the needs of future residents and future employees in Mill Creek. Also, housing development can produce a lot of revenue for the city from the development process itself, from taxes, from fees during the construction process. And, you know, more concentrated or denser housing essentially means a higher concentration of customers, a higher concentration of, of tax revenue. And I think importantly, as we mentioned before as well, talking about extending the, the feel of the town center and what, and, and adding more housing to the area to really in, increase the vitality of the existing town center as well and ensure that it's continued vitality. And that's one of the important goals that you'll see in eventually in the economic development goals and policies as well, is just a focus on, you know, maintaining and improving the vitality of the town center. And it's sort of related and another sort of, you know, way to connect the dots between housing and economic development is this work from home phenomenon, which we're all well aware of now. We did some work earlier in the year trying to see like in a typical multifamily, you know, development of, you know, a hundred or whatever, some number of units, how many sort of jobs would be located there based on the current rates of people working from home. And based on the research that was done over the past few years by a few economists, mostly at Stanford, you know, they estimate that if you take sort of a, a one work day as its own thing, since obviously a lot of people, you know, work from home, not every day, but only some days. Something like up to twenty percent of workdays in the Seattle area, in the sort of job mix that people work in Mill Creek and, and in other suburban Seattle jurisdictions, it might be work from home. And so really that means that housing locations are job locations and that, and that, you know, the, the creation and development of new housing also creates more employment. So I want to talk just briefly, and I, I know you guys took a tour of some, some new developments in, in Woodinville and Kenmore. And I heard from the staff and from Mike that it was a really fun experience. So that was great that you guys had the chance to do that. I want to talk a little bit about Lake Oswego. This is, you know, about half an hour or less south of downtown Cortland. It's Lakeview Village and this was a project sort of similar in some ways to the projects that, that Main Street came and talked to us about last time. But it had some interesting differences and I just wanted to sort of point out some things about this that, that might get your wheels turning in thinking about the town center. You're on the next slide, Manny. So, you know, like some of the other sites that we talked about, such as the Woodinville Schoolhouse, the city did own a parcel here in downtown Lake Oswego that they wanted to redevelop. But there was a, a long process of public, private partnerships and negotiations that eventually fell through several in a row. The city and, and our firm, Leland, worked with the city to negotiate a deal with Graymore, who, who's a great developer, been doing a lot of cool things, including the waterfront in Vancouver, Washington as well. And what the city ended up sort of using as the catalyzing development here was the central parking structure. So they were able to reduce the amount of parking that the other developers, that other developers had to build, or that Graymore had to build at their expense and therefore allowing the project, you know, to, to make financial sense. And that investment from the city in the parking garage and partnership with the developer over this piece of land jumpstarted a lot of momentum. And since then, there have been some other developments on either side of this one. Off to the right here on the photo, that, that happened on, on private parcels because of that catalyzing investment. So this was an interesting, you know, example, I think, because there was sort of a stop and start process. There were a few different phases of things that happened. And when we were talking before about And, um, when we were talking before about, you know, what the city can and can't do. As far as economic development, as far as redevelopment goes in the sub area. Uh, this kind of shows that, you know, there's, it, there, it doesn't necessarily have to be entirely, uh, publicly funded, or even on entirely on publicly owned land. But just that the city taking, uh, the opportunity just to catalyze or start, you know, key, uh, a key moment. Uh, in the development process can have a big impact, and I think, um, if you go to the next slide. Uh, the town center, in a, in a way, already represents that type of investment that the city has made in the planning process. City has already had a lot of success with, and because it's adjacent to the new sub area. Um, you know, the, as Manny was saying, extending that, that sort of look and feel south. Um, it's, it's, it's already sending a signal, and, you know, it's a well-known place, the Mill Creek Town Center, um, and. So just a few other quick considerations here before we get on to the discussion, um, about what this might mean for the sub area. Uh, you know, the market for mixed street development is still strong in Seattle, it's not as strong as it was. Uh, when interest rates were lower, uh, but there's still things getting built, um, and there's still a high demand for housing, you know, in the whole region, as we know. Especially here, you have the light rail opening up next, you know, few months, the BRT, uh, which I took last week when I was up there. Uh, it was really fast, and, uh, it was, yeah, that was fun, anyway. Um, you know, the, in addition to the town center, the city does own the city hall property. Now, that's a, a big question mark, you know, I, I, I don't want to prescribe anything here or make any suggestions. Uh, about what may or may not occur as far as potential redevelopment of City Hall, but it is publicly owned, so, you know, there is the potential opportunity there. Uh, and, and finally, I wanted to point out these three, uh, you know, ways in which the city can control and influence. The type of development that goes on. Um, the first and most obvious is zoning, that's the way that cities, of course, influence all development in general, and. Uh, you know, just rezoning this sub area does certainly send a signal, uh, to the development community. In addition, and we talked a little bit about this earlier, design standards are important and can really, uh, help influence, uh, you know, what. That to, that what gets built is what, uh, you know, uh, the city and, and you want to see built there. And also, development agreements are a really powerful tool, uh, requiring developers to come to the table and sort of negotiate what, um. What, what gets built, you know, it, it, it's not as prescriptive as the city just building something, but it's also, you know, a, a lot more efficient in some ways. Uh, and, and allows, um, you know, some more flexibility between, uh, what the developer might need to make a project work and what the city can provide. Uh, so, you know, my sort of concluding thought here, um. The sub area redevelopment can, uh, as we already talked about a lot, help the city achieve these housing targets. But also connect a lot with the, uh, these economic development goals, supporting local businesses, increasing tax revenue. And, uh, creating, you know, an extension of the great sort of town center atmosphere, um, to create more places for the local community.
And I just wanted to say one more thing about. Kind of the potential of public amenities and community benefits that come with. Redevelopment projects like this, uh, you know, this is a good example in Lakeview Village, if you look at this, uh, street area to the left. This is actually designed as what we sometimes call a shared street or a festival street, where it's all at one level. And that you can tell there's some special paving treatments there. Uh, so, you know, these types of streets can be developer-built to design standards. Maybe through development agreements, you reach negotiation on those, um, attributes. And then they're for public use, and they can serve benefit of parking and. Uh, places for business, you know, during most of the time, but maybe every once in a while you close them for, uh, festival or a market. Um, so that's, that's one example. Another one I just wanted to mention real quick, and maybe this will be on. Your tour someday is Northline Village in Linwood. And if you Google Northline Village, they have a whole website of what's going to happen there. It's basically Merlone Geyer's project, Mer- Merlone Geyer is a private development company. Um, their project next to the city center light rail station in Linwood. That has been, you know, fully envisioned, there are animated, um, visualizations that you can watch. But the, it, you know, there was a development agreement as part of that project. Um, the city actually purchased land for a, a central park area there. That, you know, was really shown as a need with more residents coming into that area. Um, but the park will be developed by, at the cost of the development project, so the raw land was a purchase by the city. The actual improvement, which is, you know, a lot of the cost, will be, uh, part of the development project, but it will be open to the public. So, that's just another great example. Uh, so with that, Mayor Protem, I think we can go to discussions about this particular part of the presentations.
Councilmember Stekler?
I almost feel sunny, funny putting that light on, because I can see my arm move up to it. Uh, another great presentation, um, no real questions, just a couple of thoughts in the interest of the study session. Um, throwing some thoughts out that, that you spurred with some of the comments you made. Uh, the tour we took of the other cities was as great as what you heard, it really was a very informative, wonderful, uh, experience. And for me personally, a couple of ideas that came out of that that I thought, uh, might make, make sense or just connect with this. You talked about the plaza, uh, where you create that plaza, uh, atmosphere with the picture, Andrew, that you showed here. And then it's open, and I think of other towns like Edmonds and other places where they have that circular area that just seems to provide a. Uh, a, a weird little hub in their, in their downtown area. And, uh, one of the things that we learned was, w- one of the cities had created an area that was. Designed for people to come down and, and meet at, and it had an indoor area and an outdoor area, because it does rain here. So the indoor area was this large space, which had, uh, a lot of tables in it that could be moved around, and. Groups could go in there and meet, and there's also a small room that, not a small, good sized room, that had sliding doors that you wanted to have a private meeting. And, uh, they actually found a, uh, a, um, a tenant with obviously a coffee company, they wanted to move in there because they could service everybody who was in there, plus the people. Who drive by and stuff, but that a lot of their, uh, citizens came down and met in this indoor area. And a lot, and in the, in the outdoor area, they, they did come down, but one of the things he said was he, they put a water feature in there that li- later just became a splash park. Because in the summertime, kids came down and the outside area was packed with people. What I noticed was, they found a piece of land, and just that piece of land, and they put this little structure in, but, uh, surrounding it was. A whole bunch of old strip malls and other areas, and, uh, when you think of what Andrew said. If you create this kind of a space, maybe in the sub area, a space where people can meet, and I've seen some pictures of some places like what you proposed, or that. That, uh, water retention pond that could be cleaned out and made into quite a nice little water feature type area. Um, it would be nice if you could build that area with the opportunity for small businesses to be around it. That are going to take advantage of all the people that were coming down, because right now, the nineteen sixty strip malls that were around it weren't really. Conducive and didn't really affect them one way or the other, it's not bad, not good. But I think you're right, if you create a nice environment that has some fun shops that people want to move around in, or especially food or. Or beverage, that would be good, so I, that was their indoor/outdoor citizen plazas, but it also brought citizens together, this is my favorite. To talk about things for the city, and if you're a small business owner, again, like I mentioned, you're working out of your home, this is a place where you can go meet somebody that. Isn't exactly a Starbucks, that isn't wrong with Starbucks, I do a lot of my meetings at Starbucks, but it was another bigger area to do it in. The other one that I saw, which I can't forget about, it was, um, a city that created a. For small businesses to help promote economic, you call it vitality, small business vitality, they created a, a small business economic incubator. They called it, and what they did was, it was a service, and I think of like, we're talking about a civic center someday for us. Where we could provide this kind of a service for small businesses in our, in our area. Uh, but not only does it provide administrative support, which some people may need, the real key was it provided social media application. It's not free, they pay for it, but obviously the city subsidy of hiring people, it's not a huge price, so it makes it affordable to them, and a lot of small businesses. Do not know how do they take advantage of social media to be effective, and this can provide them that advisory. Recommendation of, okay, based on your business, here's a couple of different applications, here's a couple of people that can do, what do they call, content marketing, where they. Create blogs and things like that for them, which is what small businesses do, but they need that, where do I go to get that help? And if you provide it, then I think you're going to provide, you can actually help this, the businesses that are already there, maybe promote some more small businesses in our area. And then last, promise this will be last, um, really what far out idea, again, something you said. Um, I may look like I'm eating, but I'm also listening and eating, uh. You talked about City Hall, and our two city halls are a direct connection to town center, and you go from town center. There's City Hall, and then we're looking at the sub, uh, Mill Creek Boulevard, right? What if we actually entertained the idea for the planning commission, what if we, um, um, oh man, this is going to go in the media if I say this out loud, but I'm afraid to, but. What if we actually look at, uh, uh, selling City Hall, uh, north and south. To a developer to create this incredible continuation of town center, I mean, it's a really proud idea. And if it would be contingent on a staged plan of, where would we put City Hall, well, maybe we're looking at a civic center that could provide. An even better environment for City Hall, and that's also a place where a lot of our citizens are going to go to a civic center. To equate them with what's happening at City Hall, they actually know where City Hall is, because they've seen it, they, uh, when they went down there for meetings or events or. Things that we were doing at the civic center, and I've seen some other citi- cities where. Their civic, their city hall that we met at in this tour was in their civic center, so it, you know, it's, there were other activities take place there. Um, so just a, for a weird, uh, study session, uh, train of thought, so those three.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Um, I think that possibly, um, Benjamin Brials would like to speak.
Hi, I do have a couple of questions about, uh, this, if it's a study session, I can, okay. Um, so I'm a commissioner on the planning commission. Um, one, so the city does own City Hall North and South, as mentioned, what about that retention pond, who owns that?
The city.
The, the city does as well, okay, and I know a number of ways that we've seen that dis- uh, shown and depicted in. Future things is that that can be some type of, uh, meeting space as well, so that would be within that whole range there. Talking on that same, uh, concept that councilmember Stekler was talking about. Uh, that Mill Creek North and South, or Mill Creek Town Center, or, oh, excuse me, City Hall North and South. Would, if there was town center existing, and town center south would basically be in the middle of that. It becomes really an engaging civic center kind of idea, uh, for, for us. Now, I know that there's something to be said about the redevelopment of these properties. And that there are some challenges due to, uh, the water shed, the, the, the blue line on that, uh, on there that. May be referred to as a dry creek bed sometimes, and sometimes it flows, um, but, um. It, uh, I know it does present some challenges through the wetlands and the buffer in there, so that's, I know one of the challenges that comes with. Uh, redeveloping this bit of property, so I wanted to, um, underst- you know, bring that up as a point, like maybe we could explore. City Hall North and South being somehow integrated into this idea about. The central place, a meeting place that's within there, and I think that's great. Um, I actually wanted to mention on the economic vitality, I think that's great. Um, I was thinking about that as compared to economic development, development to me means growth and kind of. In some time, in some ways, the plowing under of what exists in order to build, to hopefully build back something better. Whereas vitality may mean sprinkling some fertilizer to accentuate what you've got. To ex- to, to build up what exists, to help sustain or help to, to, help to improve. And, uh, sustainable businesses that already exist, so I actually like that term, economic vitality better. Based on that viewpoint, um, I think those were the thoughts that I had as to this and the comments I would have given. If this were a planning commission meeting, which it is, we opened it. Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, um, councilmember DK.
So I'll start with, um, what commissioner Brials, um, started with with vitality, actually, that was a note that I had that I. At first I went, oh, I don't know, we, we, it's better, easier to grasp, and we all get economic development, but as I look through this and I was thinking about. The chamber board meeting I was at, you know, earlier today, I thought, you know, I think this is potentially a bigger. Or a better fit, because sometimes when I think of economic development, or as I, you know, looking at other chambers across our area. It is a lot about bigger businesses. Um, and they're like space and allotments and that, it, I, 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 not that I don't have the vision that that could be, you know, that there could be a headquarters of some company here. I also don't know if that really is in line with what we're looking for, maybe we're more of. If it's a headquarters, it's because they started as a mom and pop shop, and they grew, and, you know, that kind of feeling, so I like. The term vitality, um, I think it makes sense, and it also, and I can't remember if it was on this slide or. In the previous presentation, but there was one, it, oh, it was your initial findings that we're not really looking at, right? And I know it said some, I think one of the higher numbers had to do with. Like they were happy with storefronts, or they would like more, there was something in there about wanting more of that, and so that's, to me then. Feels like the vitality aspect to it, so I would encourage, um, as, you know, as my feedback, that I, I, I think that does make sense for. The direction and who we are as a city, um, that that feels aligned with where we're going. I don't know if this is, so next, um, comment, um, I don't know if this is in opposition to what councilmember Stekler said. So if it is, apologies, because I don't mean it that way, because I, um, I got it differently. When we did the tour and we were looking at that particular city description, um, Kenmore, that, um, councilmember Stekler said about. That they were able to build that one area, and then, you know, there's all those strip malls around it, what I gathered is, they had hoped. There would be, it would spur, and it didn't happen, and so that is what I took away from it, and so. So good, so good, we were on the same page then, so that is my concern, is that there's a lot of this, um, um, kind of hoping like it'll come. I, um, which in some places, like Andrew said in the presentation, it does seem to happen. Case in point, Woodinville, I think, would be a good example of it where, and I really appreciate that we can kind of follow or, or. Watch Kenmore in terms of how they're thinking through it, because they shared with us that there. Were surprised by that as well, and now we're having to look at, you know, what do we do? What, why did it not work out in the way that it does for other places, because I think that's going to be the same. Issues that we would have as Mill Creek, because we don't have a lake, we don't have a thriving wine, you know. Central location, so I think as a, as a community that is very much that bedroom community, and, you know, we were. Based off of homes as our core, you know, a- as our core, you know, it's a planned community, that's. That is our identity, is that, it's not tourism, it's not any other things, that, and it still stays with us. Um, and I, I think based off of what I've heard from feedback, it seems like people still want it to be that way. So we're not, you know, they're not looking for it to be a Woodinville or, um, other places like that in terms of businesses. To that effect, the other thing I wanted to flag, it's very c- c- clear to me. That in some ways, we definitely, because we keep seeing it over and over again, it's that comment about city-owned properties. So if we do want any traction, I know, I think I said this in the last one when we did our recap, if we want to do any traction on anything, it is about. Owning land and thinking through what that has to do, I love the example of the, the park and the, um, I'll look into Northline Village in Linwood and that. You know, aspect, but, um, I think that's very key, and then the one thing I didn't see here, and it's probably because it's really early on, but I wanted to flag. Because I saw the bikes and the trails and pedestrian, at the end of the day, it rains a lot here, and so parking. Anything we do has to be part of it, because we have, you know, yes, you, you. Where people live, they are not, for some of the age demographics, they're not going to be able to walk down, some absolutely do. Some for kid's safety, they're not comfortable, you know, uh, crossing Bothell Everett Highway with their kids on bicycles. That, you know, there's those limitations, so parking, I wrote it like five times, um, and I. Apparently, I just kept thinking about it in different parts, so I'm just flagging that, that, um, I think. Anything we do, and again, this could be really early, but I'd love to see examples of how that goes, because that was my concern with the city hall property. Is if we do do something here, parking, it's already tough now, thank you.
Uh, Mayor Protem, may I, uh, respond with a couple of thoughts to that?
Sure, and then after that, um, councilmember Paddock has his light up, but if you want to respond to, um, councilmember DK for, for as fresh, go for it.
Councilmember DK for, for those great comments. And I just wanted to encourage you, Mill, Mill Creek is not Kenmore. And I think Kenmore, really, there, there really was some good change there, but, but you're right, there's been kind of the stagnancy, especially along. Bothell, Bothell, is it Bothell Everett? No. Five twenty-two Bothell Highway, right, okay, um, that, that makes it kind of a challenge, uh. And I just think, as Andrew pointed out, the town center is such an asset for you. It really does add this kind of element of attraction to your community, because it's so unique. Not every community has that, right? Um so I just, I wanted to mention that, and then on your comment related to parking, very important. Of course, I mean, we 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 need to find that balance with having two bus rapid transit lines. You know, coming through the area and how much parking is the appropriate amount of parking. Um and when you have trans, access to transit, you know, and and the city will find that right balance. I'm not worried about that. One of the great tools that goes along with that is having more on-street parking. You know, what if, imagine if people were able to park all along Mill Creek Boulevard, for example, you know. How much, how many cars would that be for parking, right? So as this area were to change and build out, if there's more connecting streets with on-street parking. That could be a good resource. I also just wanted to take the opportunity to mention that. Parking is kind of a sticky, a sticky wicket, because. You don't want it to overwhelm your sense of place. And so developments, they require parking, of course. But unless you have developments that are of a certain height, that turns into surface parking. A lot of surface parking that tends to overwhelm the sense of place of architecture and urban design. So that's one of the reasons why we've been saying, you know, that development, mixed-use development really needs to be above five stories. To be able to have parking be structured, or at least partially structured. Because otherwise, you're just gonna have lots of surface parking everywhere. So I just really wanted to take the opportunity to mention that, because that's really not what you have in town center, right? You do have structured parking, we have, you know, on-street parking. And you don't have a lot of surface parking, maybe maybe uh town and country market, but not a lot. Um that's kind of overwhelming your visual uh space, so just wanna mention that, thanks.
I think that was absolutely, I I thank you for mentioning it and responding that way, because that's what it clearly came to me when we went. On all of the walks that we did, especially in conversations with. When I went to Olympia, I met with other mayor, the mayors of the area, they kept talking about parking was the issue, like. Even though we built all this parking, there's still parking issues, there's all this and there was limits. And so that was very clear to me that, oh, I I happen to be one of those very opposed to high, because it didn't make sense. At least the previous sub-area plan because of the the space in it. But for this area, if we're thinking about this whole, you know, chunk, that that has to be the way. Because while we do have the two transit lines and, you know, very great for them, that takes people into the city or out of the city. But residents in the city, it still doesn't help them go to these things. And that's who I, I mean, I'm happy for vitality that we have people coming, who are coming in to go shopping and they have the transit. Or for people who live in the city, they can go to to work and connect with all those. But at the end of the day, I want people who live in the city to be able to use these resources and and stay in the city. Instead of going away, so for me, that's always, I guess, the focus on vitality is. Is how do we get people to stay within the city and use our resources um versus, you know, others coming in? That doesn't, that's not always my focus, and I'm sure for others it is. But thank you for very, being very clear and for um explaining that additional information on parking.
Um before I let Councilmember Paddock speak, and then um the city manager would like to speak, it is already eight fifteen. So um we need to extend the meeting, so could I have um make, entertain a motion to extend to nine thirty? Cause we still have quite a bit to get through.
Second.
I'll make a motion.
He just made the motion.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to nine.
Thirty.
Thirty.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any against, any abstentions? Motion passes four zero. Thank you, and now um Councilmember Paddock, and then after you, um city manager has a comment.
Well, now that I have till nine thirty. Um actually, I just, one thing I wanna call about the parking is the parking that we have um is hidden, right? It's it's not along the drag, it's off to the sides, and the same thing with Woodinville and and Bothell, the parking is down. So they 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 have that 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 parking necessity requirement, I think that Councilmember DK was was talking about. One of the things that I that I really appreciated about uh the conversation that the planning commission had last time. And is going on today is it's really focused on the kind of that intersection of economic development and housing. And seeing is how those two things go together, it's not just about how do we, you know, cram more housing into a a tighter space. It's really about how do we create sustainable um. Businesses and and revenue streams for those businesses, um which just benefits everybody. And and I think, you know, we're having that that right um conversation. And when you talk about expansion, I think that what comes into play there is really what what are the types of businesses that we would attract to come into the to the city? And, you know, after we went on those those three tours, the the dichotomy that I was thinking about oddly enough wasn't. The three cities that we 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 went to, although that was fantastic, but how does this, how does it? An area become a Redmond Town Center? Which seems to be just kind of slowly, you know, kind of receding into the woodwork? Or a U Village? I'm not suggesting we're either one, I'm just saying like two. Two developments that started in similar times and had affluence around them, like we do. Um maybe different types of affluence, but affluence around them. Why does one become a place that you cannot find a parking space? Because there's so many people there. And one that you can park anywhere, because there are so few people there. And I don't have the answer to that question, but I think I think that that that. Dichotomy um should be something that, you know, the smart folks in the room are 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 thinking about as well. Cause I, um again, I'm not suggesting that we're gonna become a U Village or Red Redmond Town Center, but we have this just gem. Of of forward thinking with the town center and an opportunity to extend that. How do we do it in a way that maybe replicates the extensions that U Village went through? That were that were um planned and methodical and almost. It's hard to say iterative, when you're talking about real estate, but an iterative process of adding on in pieces and not trying to go for broke with everything. And um something like that, so just thought process.
Thank you, some good points. Um city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, so something I have to kind of comment on is kind of my my address, Councilmember Paddock's uh question about what brings in. People to neighborhoods and cities. One of the things that I I've found on these slides is uh what may be missing is industry. Um we talked, and the closest thing I saw here was partnerships, but that's still not industry. If you look at some of the cities in our uh some of our neighbors on the east side. Uh Revon, Microsoft, Kirkland, you'll find that many of these high-tech companies are housed in those areas for certain reasons. Housing reasons. Local government um regulations that allow certain types of industries to come into their neighbors, neighborhoods. So I'm focusing on uh and I talked with staff a little bit about this too, just to. Cause I think that technology is something that might be an industry that we might wanna think about um within the city Mill Creek. Though you wanna talk about those income bands that we're not talking about, that the council commissioner brought up. You wanna talk about retaining wealth across the city of Mill Creek, which is. Many of the reasons why our demographic i- is why it is now, and that's pretty factual, I think, and 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 the data will show that. Looking forward uh down the road, um we all know what technology does uh to our families, to our communities. How it impacts everything we do. Um and and also think, I'm kind of thinking randomly about certain things, but from a community. Um one of the elements of our twenty-year vision is this community. And how do you think about technology and how it will bring people together as well as a city? Technology will help differentiate Mill Creek from, I think, a lot of cities around us, because we're maybe, could be forward-thinking in terms of. How we can utilize that from a policing standpoint, um which we're talking about right now. Um how we leverage technology from a connecting our community from infants to seniors. Um and how we use it from a public, not only public safety, but um how AI is used now. To um identify traffic patterns. And where there are vacant spaces across certain areas as well. So there are a lot of ways, I think, moving in that direction, or at least thinking forward. Um where our our kids are gonna be someday, and I kind of start thinking more about this, because my kids start asking questions about. Why aren't you thinking about this? I need to put my resume online. How do I um preserve a URL or, you know, a dot com, so I can put that on? Kids are starting to think forward, that's where they're gonna be, uh and as we start to. Head that off um right now, start thinking about that, I think we might. It might be a good thing to consider, you know, as something that was a differentiator versus city Mill Creek, so.
Thank you, Martin. Um I have um I have a bunch of thoughts and questions um. Based on the presentation and the comments. I'm looking through all the things that I have written down here. One, um addressing the economic vitality, um I do like the way economic vitality sounds. My only question right now is that we are working with Rob to do our um to do our vision. And I don't remember what we're calling it, and that, because we were calling it something different that was not economic development. And I want to make, I want that phrasing to be consistent, because it's whatever we've been coming up with as a group. And I, maybe it is economic vitality, but it was something else, and I just don't remember what that name was. Um but that's something that we were working on with him, was what we wanted to call economic development. So um I think it's important that that we're matching along with that vision, right? Cause instead of being totally different, um so those can be synced in. Um and I do, I know, I do, that was one thing that we took away from our um. Trip was how all the cities owned some property and then spurred um the change by doing something with what they owned. And what does that look like? Um I personally really like the idea of us um enhancing that that stormwater pond. Like we had mentioned in the um original sub-area plan. Um and the work that would go into that and enhancing that and making that into something else and making it into a place. Um to me, that was really exciting. I I do wanna point out, I don't. I I don't want everybody going and getting excited over um the discussion over selling city hall north. Cause all the council's not here, and I don't want that to turn into something um based off one comment, so I just wanna make sure. That um that doesn't jump off somewhere, um and that. We make sure that if we are gonna have discussions about, that's a full council um discussion and um would need to be fleshed out. So um. Oh, so let's see, what else? I put in a few other questions. Um regarding to um, like you're talking about the um the ways we can influence development. The zoning design standards and development agreements. And I think what we learned, at least one of the things I took away from our trip, is that it's extremely important that we. In my opinion, we need to make our design standards better and stronger. Like we need to have those really honed in and dialed in to maintain that we get the look that we want of um the Boulevard Sub Area. And also um that, yes, some development agreements would be needed, because like that. Like those nice little meeting spaces that you have in between areas, like what we saw in Woodinville, those were, those were from the development agreement. So I think we need to make sure we're getting our design standards um tweaked and up to par where we want them. Before um we go and change the zoning so that, so that we're, we get what we hope to get. What else today? Um while we're thinking about this, I I forgot to say it from my, my, something I took away from our trips. But something that I think is really important too is displacement of our current businesses. Because as we start to look at any development, what's gonna happen to them? And it becomes more, it could become more expensive, what do we do? How do we help them? How do we help not lose them, right? Because I I know personally, I was thinking the other day, like I come down here, like there there's four or five businesses I come to, like my whole day, like. What happens to those people, the those services that I use? Um if things start to get developed and they, and things are nice, and things get more expensive for them, so how do we help them to stay? Because they're part of the community and what people use. And um also, I just, I wanna throw out there a question for us to think about. And when we're talking about the mixed use being strong still, so I saw that the mixed, the uh market for mixed use is still strong. What concerned me when we went on our walk was how many areas that still had some space? That had not leased out yet. Um and also, it looked like some, there seems to be some. Some struggle with areas that have that work use bottom, like what they had, we, like the farm has some. And getting those filled, and and they really had a discussion with us on having flexibility. So I guess I want to make sure we're keeping flexible minds on this, because um. I'm not sure that they're filling up the way we would hope that they would be filling up. So that's just a a thought question I had. And I think that's it, that's all the things I had questions on, so, or thoughts on, so. That's it, and then I see Councilmember Steckler um raised his hand again, so.
Yeah, just a couple of things, this is kind of interesting. I looked up the uh strategic vision document that we have here and our four uh pillars that we uh braced on it. It is interesting, ours is called Financial Health and Economic Vitality. So just so, so you know, great minds think alike, that's where we've been, we've been uh moving uh towards that. And I was also going to uh just mention, as we talk about the development, I think the farm is a great example, that's what I was gonna address. You know, they rented up extremely fast on their on their retail pads. And then the uh uh commercial core on the bottom level. Um theirs were much more attuned to like a professional services type of 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 entity. And they're having a real tough time renting those out. Uh it's just slower than other ones, but then I go over to Woodinville and what what they did was their bottom level. Definitely had a retail appearance to it, slightly different height, you know, the the front was elevated out, so it. It had that pleasant retail storefront look, makes you want to go inside. So when we talk about, you know, the the what they call four-in-one and five-in-one, which the four-in-one was the most common, and five-in-one, I think is the Bothell one, that. You have four stories of 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 residential in the bottom floor, the fifth floor is a uh uh commercial. Um and it was Woodinville that really, their bottom floor looked like a bunch of retail shops, and it had a much more inviting appeal to it. So I think, I think it can work with that mixed use, but you gotta be careful that 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 bottom floor, if it looks like a. Kind of a very plain Janey-looking uh professional services, nothing more professional services. Um it 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 doesn't rent up as fast, and they are struggling with that one. Boy, their pads though rental rented right up, so. Again, anytime you can have space for a separate uh retail pad.
Yeah.
You're gonna bring in some very enticing um tenants that improve the area a lot. Yeah, and I I agree with the Mayor Protem on my city hall, that was just a a thought to consider. It's definitely not a recommendation by any means, so if you're listening, media, I'm not recommending that we sell city hall.
I see the idea.
I don't wanna read that tomorrow, but that it is, everything's possible, and if we could do a better job with city hall, let's talk about it, it's just not. Say, no, heck, we'd never do it. The only thing I do like is it does provide a connection to to town center. As opposed to a big, you know, it it just would flow right into it. But anyway, it's a discussion item, unlike, and it's a thought, not a a a recommendation.
Um, okay, I'd like to see if anybody else from the planning commission now had any more input or thoughts, anybody? Okay. I don't see any hands raising yet online, so.
So Matt Nolan, your planning commission chair, first, I wanna thank the council, because you have been forward-thinking and nimble. If you look back to when we started thinking about Mill Creek Boulevard, that was when we were looking at. If you look back to when we started thinking about Mill Creek Boulevard, that was when we were looking at using it as a cut-through route. Rather than keeping the traffic on the arterial roads there. And so that's allowed the city to move forward and look at these different alternatives. And that was a a choice by the council. And so you got to give yourself some credit for that. Um, one of the interesting things Leland talked about, and the city's very well. Um, situated to take advantage of is that work from home. If you look at our housing stock that we've got, you know, twenty percent is that number. I know in my own office, it's at forty percent. And you know, is that, how is that going to change? You you heard Andrew talk about that studies now just coming out of Stanford. That's going to change. And we're looking at a twenty-year plan here. And so where will that be? How does the city take advantage of that? But I think it gets to what our our city mayor, our manager talked about. And just having technology available to people so they can work from home, having the access to the the green line and things like that. So the city is really well situated to do those things. Um, but then our housing, you know, our Mill Creek Boulevard Sub Area is. Ideally condos. I think that's something where we as a city can work with the Association of Washington Cities and say, how do you do that? Because nobody is building condos now because of the whole issue around long-term liabilities. You're going to get it at seven years, you're going to get a lawsuit to. Start over again. And and that is a a piece that I think over the length of this planning horizon can be solved. Um, and then I I do think that it is, I remember working on the comp plan. A decade ago, and we were talking about the aging population in Mill Creek and having housing for them. And so I think we, having the ability to move down can be something we solve over this time. But yeah, I don't think we're going to be you, Village or Redmond, but I think, you know, we are the largest and the first urban plan development in the state. And how you choose to go forward is how we're going to drive what's happening in Black Diamond, what's happening in Redmond Ridge and everywhere else. And you've done an amazing job of driving the the city forward with a vision, with staying nimble. And I think we have an opportunity again with what we're looking at here to do those same things.
Thank you. Mic drop. Was there, I don't see any hands up online. I'm just trying to make sure. Um. So my question is, before we finish this this up, um. What were you wanting to take away from us? What what did you need?
I think we got some great input tonight, some great discussion.
Okay.
I I heard a few questions. I tried to answer some of those, but also took note of some that we can address in the future when we come back to.
Yeah, and Manny, can I just say?
Oh, yes, Andrew.
Yeah, Andrew.
Yeah, thanks uh everyone for a really great discussion. And and I also wanted to say. Uh, I I was pleased to hear a lot of of, you know, themes that we've been talking about with the Planning Commission come up tonight as well. And things that, you know, that we've been looking at in the previous comp plan and updating those goals and policies. And so I have, you know, I think that'll, you know, we'll be taking everything into account as we uh continue to refine those uh with the Planning Commission here at our next meeting too. So I think um it was a really timely discussion for that, and hopefully you all will feel that a lot of these things are going to be addressed in, when you see the the draft of the goals and policies. I mean, uh, to the city manager's point as well, you know, we, we didn't talk much about industry today, but we did have a good discussion about. Uh, sort of key industries, regional industries, regional goals around attracting, um, you know, key industry uh in- industry players. And and I think we talked a bit about that in some of the redevelopment scenarios as well, just the, you know, the potential for, you know, tech. Um, employment or some larger office type things in the future over this larger planning horizon like Commissioner Nolan just said. So I think um, I think that you'll you'll find that is uh going to be addressed in in the goals and policies, although it wasn't necessarily a focus of our discussion. So anyway, thanks for all the great uh great thoughts and and hopefully you'll see those reflected in there.
Thank you, um, Andrew. And then I see that David Hamilton has his hand raised now too.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, I think these joint meetings and getting the endpoint directly from the council are absolutely invaluable to the Planning Commission. When we headed into this process, I was afraid I could see us going, okay, we're going to work on this for nine months. Lob it over the fence to the council. They haven't seen it. They haven't talked about it. And we're, we're doing the process the correct way. And I want to thank everybody involved for that.
Thank you. Thank you, David. And I I agree, it's nice to hear from from the council and and from you. Um, as we go along the process so that we all kind of know what what's going on and how everybody feels. So thank you for that. And then um, I, just before I close that out, I just want to, one more comment for myself. Because I forgot to say it in my comments that I do, as we're looking at this, I do want to add on to what Councilmember Duque said. That I realize that we are in a moment where they're trying to get us to cut back on parking. But as we are developing this down here and looking that every, all of us that live up the hill. You, it's not so easy to just get down here and you can't just take, it's not like we're going to all be taking a bus down here. To get our groceries and to do things. And um, you know, we do have kids trying to get down here. And so we, the people who live up, live here right now are still going to be driving down here for the most part to get here. So we we are going to need places to park. So I just, that's um, Councilmember Duque kind of hit hit the nail on the head with that one. So I just want to mention that. Now, um, I need to close out the Planning Commission meeting. Do I just need to say I close out the Planning Commission meeting? Oh, oh, you get to close out the planning, you're special.
Mayor Protem, I just wanted to mention, I have a couple more slides just real quick, but.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Me to go through those before you close.
Yeah, go through that before I close it out. Sorry, we just wanted you to stand up and get exercise.
These are going to be super quick, um, so you can stay there, Chair Nolan. Uh, just, this is our flow of work. Just so everybody sees kind of where we're headed next, economic development. You know, we're underway with that. Then we're moving into environment, parks, recreation, open space, transportation, and utilities, capital facilities later in the summer. And so our rhythm is really to come back again um in July with another briefing to council. We need to schedule that at an appropriate time for everyone. And hopefully we can make that a joint meeting as well. And we'll be ready to talk about environment, parks, recreation, and some transportation discussion then. And then uh September, we should really have everything really uh drafted. And we can kind of bring bring you up to date on the capital facilities utilities at that time. And then have some further discussion about development regulation updates that that are needed to support the comp plan. So I think that covers it. Just a reminder that um we'll want to be in a position by October. To um work with the Planning Commission to make a recommendation on the plan to City Council and then to bring that to City Council in November. So I think I'm done.
Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn our special planning commission meeting of May seventh?
Motion to adjourn our special committee, our special joint commission meeting.
Okay, a second on that?
Dave will second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, Council.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you, everyone. Um.
Sorry, House um, Hafstang. So as the Planning Commission goes through the policy and they really digest, they really do have a rigorous conversations. What we've decided to do is put every policy that the Planning Commission um have reviewed online. So if you have any questions or you just want to, you know, do a light reading before bed. You can go to uh the city website. Right now, if you look at our calendar, we have two. Um, draft policy that is the land use and um housing. And now we will be working on economic development. So those are online for public comment, public review. If you have any questions, any comment, email it to Todd, nothing. So. You can definitely email them to me and we will share with our consultants. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, now we are moving on to reports. City Manager.
Mayor Protem, uh, I have one report. Uh, we're talking a lot about the twenty-year vision and. Uh, the conclusion of that as well as the three to five-year principles that uh Rob Penthe in nineteen sixty-one are going to be finalizing. And that's going to be on the twenty-eighth of this month in council. We're going to get, hopefully it's just, we would like to memorial memorialize. Um, our deliverables so that, so we can continue moving forward and working with Rob on um his plan to continue helping. Us, the the team on uh um guiding us moving forward through our budget process as well as uh. Our subsequent planning um for the thirty-five year period. So I just wanted to bring that up and um. Uh, that's my final report. And then I'll hand it over to our uh city engineer.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Protem, Council. Uh, just a couple of quick updates. I know that it was requested of us to give an update on DRCC, where we were with that and our current status. We have completed, uh, it's the bottom one there, the determination map. Thanks. Um. The wetland delineation has been performed and it is in the process of being finalized as far as recommendations for what to do. Uh, wetland four and wetland five are the two that we are mainly looking at. Those ones, we um are consultant believe are created by human interaction. And so it's a high likelihood that we will be able to fill them. And we'll do mitigation for that, of course, and also get approval from uh uh the necessary groups. But we are going through the jurisdictional determination to figure out who we have to get permitting from. But that is a good sign for the use of this site. Um, we anticipate getting a final report in the next two to three weeks on this. Um, in the meantime, survey is ongoing on the site. We will get a final survey in about a month. Uh, for it. So then from that, we'll be able to do further design. We are also pursuing outreach on the project. So we are doing our, some of our first outreach at the city chat happening next week. Uh, we'll be having a table there to discuss DRCC. Also, we're looking to do another outreach in early June. And we're also putting together a advisory committee. Uh, of citizens in order to advise us on what people would like to see at the park as well. Or the DRCC properties, I should say. So I wanted to give you an update on that, let you guys know what's happening there. Um, additionally, we got, uh, are there any questions on DRCC before we do the next one? Yes.
So a couple of questions, one on the outreach. Um, when we've done this in the past, we've, we've asked people, what would you like to see? Um, and I'm wondering, are we now giving them some aided uh questions like, would you like to see this specific center?
Right.
Before a field. Okay, good. So we're aiding now.
Yes, we are. We want to recognize the fact that we've done the outreach before. And so we are including those as as some of the starter points. I'm not going to say we aren't going to take any new ideas.
Correct.
But we are one to say that, you know, we have done the outreach in the past and here are some of the original items that we've done.
And what do you think of these? So we get an idea of which ones are, okay, that's great. And then my second question was in regards to this wetland is fantastic news on on wetland uh five. I think I'm reading that right. Yeah, five. On um, you know, this wetland one, which is in the property, I believe that came out of the. Um, the C part of this DRCC, um, last C, um, that. That property, because of wetland two that runs all the way down, are we really limited to developing just that one side of the wetland? And then, then look at a different development through the set, or can we go across that wetland?
There are, we can look at doing non-invasive items across the wetland, but specifically things like paths, trails, that kind of stuff.
Okay, yeah.
Between them.
But not development.
But not heavy development.
Right. So we're really looking at one side and then another side.
Yeah, and also realize that on the east side of wetland two, there's a steep slope. It drops probably ten to fifteen feet.
Right.
And so it's difficult to design any kind of a feature around that slope. And so it may be that we use two sides. We're not going to say that there's a direction that we're going right now. But it does create a central feature to the site to have this wetland going through.
Which is a good feature from a a a nature preserve type of development. That part's really quite lovely. But then the other side, the western side, which has the frontage to Bothell River Highway, which has that value. Um, that might be a whole different discussion of opportunity. Okay, do we know any idea of the proximate, I would love to know the proximate acreage though on that eastern side.
I don't know uh off the top of my head, but that's something we can definitely look into.
I'd like to know, how much are, when we talk about, we've got fourteen acres that we can develop. Well, we really don't. We have two, maybe three or whatever it is. I'd I'd love to know what what it is that uh that we're talking about. And that might be something good for your outreach to kind of. Uh, help position it. We don't, you know, we've always telling people we have a lot of land.
Right.
Uh, and we are kind of limited.
Especially when you add in the uh, I believe it's Cook property on the other side of.
Oh, the Cook, right, yeah, which is, yeah, it's a, it's a bigger hole than that east side. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Paddock and then Councilmember Duque.
Thanks for the update. Um, you mentioned an advisory committee. Um, has that been formed? Have folks been selected for that? I'm seeing a shake over there.
Just in the process of doing that, it it covers sports, cover fine arts, cover community groups, cover young, old. Nonprofits, schools, those kinds of things. We've got a draft list. I've been working with the city manager, talking about that, about fifteen to twenty people probably. Get Karen Reed involved again as a facilitator contributor, and she's got a lot of history of that original input. So we're just putting that together.
Thank you.
Councilmember Duque.
That was my question. Um, I was, I I have on here, oh, is that something we need to vote upon? To like put in that there's going to be an advisory committee? And then how was that being promoted or or publicized? But I guess I can ask you um offline about that. Curiosity, the land that is not ours, that is north. Of um, the DRCC, that was something was going to be built there and all that. So did they have, they, did they have to do a whole wetland category? Like, did they do this? Or do you know if they've done that?
Yeah, I think that original development plan is the seven Cs we talk about. It's the Kelly property that's on the northeast corner of Dumas and North Street Road. They did it, and wetland delineation, when they first put in a development agreement. So they had an approved plan. They elected not to move forward. That's what's kind of stalled out. But so some of that work has been done. That stuff, as you know, can get old. But I don't think a lot has changed. But I, I think there's some interest from, interest, potential interest from that property owner to say, let's see what's going on with the city there. And maybe their recreational use will go forward or maybe have some other ideas. But that is information that's interesting and available to us. If you look at the map, you're looking at wetland five. Touches that corner. And so there is kind of a connection there that the wetland wildingist would tell us is potentially there. But I think like Dan said earlier, that wetland five is, I got the wrong number, four. Wetland four, excuse me, is a, I'm out of battery.
Yeah.
In many ways. Um, so wetland four, the the fact that it was kind of man-made by the way the road went through.
Oh.
That may have also affected the corner of their property, but their plan was to come in right next to Remillard. You remember, they had a, the council did a uh, uh, we we promised not to build anything too tall in that corner to help them get in. So I think that their property allowed that. They may have had to adjust some wetland to get in there, but.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yes, and then I also had a a one other, or two other updates, sorry. Uh. The uh, a few months ago, the council approved the reduction of the speed along State Route ninety-six from forty-five to forty. We just got notification from Wash Dot that that will be completed no later than June nineteenth. So letting you guys know that that will be taking place. One other item I wanted to bring up is that just in the last week. We got some results from Sweetwater Ranch. I wanted to give you guys an update on that one. We had a full structural design uh or structural investigation of that done of the four houses that are bordering the the pipe that was replaced. All of the houses are in good structural condition. There has been no settlement of those houses in any way, according to our uh structural engineer. Um, our civil engineers have done a drainage uh analysis and have found that the replacement pipe that was done in two thousand and eighteen. Is of sufficient size and capacity for the flows. So we are currently of the opinion that we don't need to do anything to that pipe there. We think that the cause of the sinkhole that appeared in the backyard of one of the property owners there. Came from the old pipe that's downhill, that's downstream of the replaced section. So basically, we need to look at replacing the rest of it. Um, we notified the homeowners today. That kind of our future plan, we're going to try to stabilize the sinkhole in the backyard this year. But in order to replace the rest of that, we're going to have to go into a wetland that is owned by uh MCCA. And so we're working with MCCA on that. But since we're going to a wetland, that triggers all kinds of permitting requirements. So it's probably going to be next year when we can actually get this under construction. So there's not, it's not as urgent of a project as we had originally thought. So we are going to be able to pull back and be able to address it more next year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Jody?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. I'm here to talk about the City Chat Open House coming up on Wednesday, May fifteenth. We're having that at City Hall North in the large community room and the small community rooms. We're using the whole space. Starts at five thirty, goes to seven PM. And um. We're going to have the. We're gonna have the. City chat portion of it is going to happen. A city, uh, Mayor Protem will speak with anyone who wants to come in. We're gonna have a little area set up. So that you can have a seat and talk with anyone you'd like to. We're also gonna have tables around and the tables are gonna, uh, be in the large community room side. We'll have food that's provided by. Uh, Safeway here in Mill Creek and, um, nothing but cakes on Starbucks.
Yay.
So always thankful for them. Uh, we're gonna have childcare in the small community room and we have our. Our, uh, good friends from Play and Learn who are setting up, uh, age appropriate toys and areas of play, interactive play. And Kiwanis, our friends from Kiwanis and Key Club members are gonna come and, uh, monitor that space so that folks can feed their kiddos. Go take them over to the play area and then come on over and talk to all the amazing staff that we have. Uh, we're excited about this because you all get to, uh, hear these amazing presentations, you know. Practically every week, you get to hear what's happening in the city. And we have, um, some fine folks who are gonna be there, uh, talking about everything from, our Mill Creek PD is gonna talk about emergen, emergen. Uh, sorry, emergency preparedness, passport services, city planning and projects, including the cop plan and DRCC like you heard tonight. Or to have recruiting, uh, recreation and volunteer, um, programs. We're gonna talk about our adopted street program and get some excitement going on that. Our boards and commissions, South County Fire is gonna be there. We're gonna have Snow Isle Library, so it's gonna be a really fun night. We really encourage everyone to come out for this. Um, we are gonna have raffle prizes. I don't know if I said that earlier, but. We're gonna try to do a little, uh, passport thing where folks go around and talk to everybody and then get their stamp and. Uh, get entered in for a prize. So we're excited about this. We hope that all of you come out for this. And, um, I also want to say thank you to Councilmember Steckler for announcing our new A and B board members. And I know you were on the, the, um, interview board, but I'm so excited to have new A and B board members. Not that our, our, all of our, our board is wonderful, but it's gonna be great to have a full board and I'm excited about that. Uh, I think that's everything. Did you have any questions?
So we're talking about the main floor, all the way in the back, those two rooms, or are we talking about the second floor?
Correct. So, uh, suite one thirty, all the way in the back. We will have some signs up and probably balloons and such to. Get everybody inside, but all the way in the back, both rooms.
Both those.
Yeah, and the center section. We're gonna have that set up for, uh, seating for families who need to sit down with their kiddos and eat and then. So hopefully we've thought through everything.
Did, is it wrong? Maybe it's a bad idea, but, uh, did, did we want to have a table where they could meet council members if they're there? Or is that a bad idea?
It is not a bad idea and we actually talked about that, but, and we did put out a, um, uh, notice of possible quorum. Just in case y'all wanted to come, uh, and we weren't necessarily gonna give you a table, but an area.
We don't get a stamp like everybody else here?
You know, we, we'll give you a sign. No, you're welcome to have a table. We just didn't wanna make you stand at a table necessarily. We thought maybe you'd wanna. Walk around, but happy to provide a table if, if that's your preference.
And is, is there also gonna be a table for Chamber?
Uh, we did not get, uh, Chamber did not say they wanted to be there, but.
Okay.
Um, we can reach out again, but last we heard, they were not having a table.
Okay.
So.
Councilmember J K.
I, um, so two things, uh, so we did invite them?
We did.
We did. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It didn't seem like that, um, in our meeting today, because I just assumed it was, um, just city. Um, but I can follow up with that and actually.
Love to have the chamber.
You would like, you would like to have the chamber. Okay, um, I will, I can follow up with that too internally. Um, and then when it comes to the table idea, that's actually was gonna be in my reports. Because, and so I'm just bringing it up now, because I, um, I spoke to Scott, Scott about it at our Parks and Rec meeting. And I said that I would ask if there was anyone else who wanted to table with me. Um, because Mayor Protem will be busy, but if there was any interest in the council members to, to be at a table, because I thought the same thing. I thought it would be a good idea.
I, I'd love to be there. I have a meeting that night, but it's in that small conference room to the left. So I think mine's been canceled because they're gonna have a same thing in it.
You guys are gonna be in two oh one.
Oh, two oh one. I still would love to be there.
Okay, so I guess after the meeting, if we can, if anyone's available or interested, um, we should find out.
All right, we'll do it while Mayor Protem is speaking. We'll have a table like, you know, point, counterpoint.
Yes, absolutely. Point, counterpoint. Yeah, one hundred percent.
We can put you all at the table. You don't, you don't have to divide. We, you can talk about that and let us know. We're happy to do whatever you'd like. Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Happy to help. Any other? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Um, all right, now it is our turn. I actually have no report, so, um, I will go down. Councilmember Steckler, any reports?
I have a quick one. It's a lovely story. Um, on Sunday, a few days ago, we had the twenty twenty-four electronic recycling event. It's put on by the city of Mill Creek and the Mill Creek Kiwanis Club. Uh, this is the fifth year, I believe, that we've done this recycling event, the electronic recycling. And I thought for sure, uh, we had pretty much worn out the city of old electronics and then we're gonna get a crappy little showing. Besides, it was also a monsoon, uh, type weather. And, uh, we had a steady stream of cars all day long. The event ran from ten to two, but with setup and breakdown, it was, uh, actually more like six hours. Um, the, we filled a twenty, pardon me, a forty-foot container truck to the gunwales all the way up. Uh, and back and people, uh, we worked very hard to keep it open all the way till two o'clock, even though we ran out of space. Cause, uh, we didn't wanna, uh, turn people away. And, uh, and then they kept, uh, they came. We had about twenty cars coming, you know, five minutes to two. Uh, throwing TVs and microwaves at us and we found a way to squeeze them into the truck. So we kept it open the entire time, but it was a, it was a great showing and our, my thanks down only to the. Kiwanis volunteers that, that volunteered and the Key Club kids that came out in the rain and it was. One wet cold day and we, everyone was soaked, but, uh, also a special shout out to, um, our. Mill Creek Volunteer of the Year, Barb Heidel, who's Citizens Patrol capacity. She sat up by herself for four hours in the pouring down rain. Uh, directing the traffic in into two lanes to make sure that we didn't back up anything. Nobody was inconvenienced. And also shout out to, uh, uh, our Chamber of Commerce President, uh, Greg Elwin and also Kiwanian who, who showed up for this event as well and. Helped, uh, load all these trucks up. It was, it was thousands of pounds of electronics that are not going into a landfill and are actually gonna be recycled. And used for other services. So great showing. I don't know where all this stuff comes from. I can't, I thought they'd be empty by now, but. I guess we'll do it again next year. That, it was a great day. It was a wonderful day.
Councilmember J K.
So on May first, we had the, um, Parks and Recreation Board, um, meeting. And it was fantastic. I mean, they had a lot to talk about. I appreciate, um, Scott's updates to, about the city. I wanted to flag for you guys that I did bring. Our twenty forty vision PowerPoint. Um, thank you to Adrian for helping me print. Uh, shout out to him online. But I did bring it up there and I shared it, um, to make sure that we are doing what, um, uh, we said that we wanted to do was to communicate, um, that. And I, I brought it up, brought up our three to five year priorities and the whole process about where we were. So using the, um, advisory board that way. Um, and then on Saturday was their first, um, because the Parks and Recreation Board have adopted a street. So it was their first, um, adopter street cleanup and we had thirty-fifth, just one side of it. And I, um, unfortunately will tell you that it was really depressing for me because there was so much trash. There's just so much along thirty-fifth and I walk that on a daily basis because that's near me. And so when you're actually looking and the amount that ends up going into that, um, n- natural area behind. Um, the, uh, Thomas Lake Commercial Center up until the meadows, because a part of it does belong to the, the HOA that I'm a part of. But that whole area, just the amount of stuff that goes in there and, you know, I, we were focusing on the road, so not going inside there, even though. I may have gone in a couple of times, but it was just really depressing. So we need to not just think about, I really appreciate this adopted street. But it's also how do we prevent it from going in that way? And even along thirty-fifth, as we continue down, um, to North Point where there is a fence. Tons of stuff underneath that we couldn't then reach, including campaign signs and, um, just, I mean, it was. It was just filthy, so it's really important for us to, to, you know, this is a step, um, to, to be able to do this monthly thing and I really appreciate. Um, uh, um, Chair, um, Tannis Kowieski was there and then our two, um. New, um, Parks, uh, board members, um, Shy and Chris were both in attendance and I forced my husband, who's on the Planning Commission. To, to attend. And so I would, um, instead of encouraging the Planning Commission and the Arts and Beautification. Board to get their own adopted street, maybe to start, you could join our monthly one, because I think, I think that would be good. And a big thank you to, um, Kiwanis for the, uh, electronic recycling. I heard it was fantastic and we did use the services and did drop off a TV and a microwave. So you were, you were a hundred percent on point on what, on what we were able to drop off. And what it shows is there's a need for it. And not just, because that morning when I remembered that's what we needed to do, I then texted at least ten people. To say, hey, that thing that you have in your garage we were complaining about, this is the day. And I knew, I had three people who at least told me, yep, I went. Thank you for the reminder. So it's definitely a need for Mill Creek residents. So thank you for providing it. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Um. Oh, yeah, I forgot. Councilor.
Clearly not the seats, it's the person. Uh. Thank you for the update on the, uh, the, um, adopted street. I, I had driven past, I think it was after you guys had, had, uh, had finished up. I saw. Those three or four bags at that corner by Thomas Lake and I had actually thought it was that we had forgotten them from, uh, the, um, uh, Earth Day. Yeah, so I'm glad to know that wasn't the case. Um, I guess one, one request I had before my report. I, 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 I would love to get a, uh, an overview of the role and the remit of the design looking forward. If, if that, I don't know if that's something that everyone or quorum of us would be interested in having, but. Maybe at some point in the next, next couple of months, it'd be really interesting to understand what they do and when they meet and, and that type of thing. But I know it's on a report, but I don't want to forget that. Um, one forward-looking report, uh, we're gonna have girls on the run, uh, do their celebration five K. I'm super excited about this on June ninth, uh, at eight thirty. I'm sure it will be, uh, an amazing success. Um, the, it's, it's called a celebration five K because it's not really a race. I mean, it, it definitely is a five K and it's, it's set up as a race, but it's really more about. Young girls, um, uh, empowerment and sense of community and sense of accomplishment. Going on this, this run, this race together and building up a team of other girls that work with them over the semester at their elementary schools. To, to show that, hey, working together with other girls, we can do really hard things. And we can accomplish things and that accomplishment is expressed in a, in a five K. And I'm just, I'm thrilled that the city is stepping up to do this. I know it's a lift. Um, I think it, it embodies the ethos of our city and I think it involves and embodies the ethos of this, uh. Um, community in this group and, uh, I'm really looking forward to that. So I hope we can all turn out for this, um, and, and please. Go out to friends and family and other electeds to, to come out. Um, I'll just say, from a personal perspective. Um, uh, being at the finish line, handing out some medals last year because of spousal, uh, uh, imperative. Um, I, I mean, I, it was, I was close to tears the entire time watching these, these girls come through and, and, um. Doing the best they could to get across that finish line. It was just so inspiring, uh, what they do. That's for the most part my report. I'm looking forward to visiting Steckler Village when that gets, uh, approved and, um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, now we can move on to executive session. Um, before I do that, I want to ask, because it says that there's. At least thirty minutes and it's nine thirty-five. Should we maybe? Or nine oh five? What did I say? Nine thirty-five? I, I can't even read the clock. Um, should I go ahead and extend the meeting a little later or just leave it at nine thirty?
I think we can get it done in twenty-five minutes. Also, you have one more urgent item, which was public comment.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I, I'm really ready to just move on to that executive session apparently. Um, so next up we have public comment. Does anyone in the audience? And would anybody online like to speak? Um, thank you. Perfect. Um, thank you. Moving on, now we will go into executive session to discuss a potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero. One I? Do I need to say all that? Um, our estimated time is. It says thirty minutes, but he says twenty-five minutes, so we'll see if we can get that done in twenty-five minutes. So, um, no action will be taken. Thank you. So, um, no action will be taken. Thank you. So we'll see if we can get that done in twenty-five minutes. So, um, no action will be taken. Thank you. So we'll see if we can get that done in twenty-five minutes. So, um, no action will be taken. Thank you.
I have a motion to extend the meeting to.
Can you, um, Mike?
Second.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I, my microphone was not on. I have a motion to extend the meeting to nine forty-five.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Um, and then also, um, Adrian, could we please extend? Uh, I don't wanna do, can we extend? Let's just start with nine thirty-five to extend the, um, the executive session and then I can message you if we go.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, all four of us are here.
Your microphone.
Hi Adrian, um, we're almost ready. Um, cause we, okay, it is nine forty-five and now we are out of executive session and we are ending the meeting.
Adjourned.
Adjourned. Thank you.
Adjourned.
Adjourned, no.
Adjourned, no.